I'd like to call the order, the city council brainstorming session. On today's July 15th.
Fantastic, yes mayor, so in the next roughly hour and ten fifteen minutes or so, before we go into our regular council meeting, what I'd like to do is to have us revisit the goals that we started to outline, I don't know, a month or so back. So you should have at your seat, a couple items to make this a little easier, I hope. One is a thicker stapled packet, and if you take that packet and you turn to the fourth page, you'll see that there is the, there's 25 goals that we came up with at our last discussion. And I understand that, you know, we've got a finite period of time today, and I'm not looking to fatigue us all, what I thought were two things that we could do to make this time the best use today. I thought one approach would be each council member could select from this list of goals, the one that was most important to them. And we could then take that goal, and we could turn that into a SMART goal, such that it's specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timed. So that way, everybody would get to address something that was important to them. Another thought is if there is a goal that you have since thought of, since the time we had this discussion, that's not on this list, you could also raise that now, if you like, as the goal that you'd like us to work on. And if we leave this session today with at least five goals that we've made SMART, I think that would be a real victory. I know that we're going to have to schedule another discussion to finish the process, much to everyone's chagrin, but again, I think these are important, because these are going to help us decide why we're doing the things we're doing, how we're spending the money we're spending, and just making sure that every single thing that we do is aligned with something that we've deemed important. Again, my thought is that if a majority of this body votes for something to be a goal, it is our goal, so if you happen to be on the two side of a vote, you know, we're all going to unite behind whatever the goals are that this body decides are its goals. So does that sound like a reasonable approach, in trying to keep things such that we don't get too fatigued?
Yes, and if I could venture out into one more area, I brainstormed it myself today.
Any disagreement when you were doing that?
Heck no, I get along with you really well. Would it be possible for each department head to come up? Because, you know, they live here, they work here, and I would like input from the department heads, and the consultants, whatever, on an issue that they feel is pressing.
Okay.
And to see how that fits in with us, because a lot of what we want to do is buy in with the city and the city staff, and I don't know, if you don't think that's too far fetched, I would like-
How about this as a suggestion, then? Absolutely, so maybe what we could do is, I told the department heads that they did not need to be present for this part today, but the next goal session meeting that we have, I can have them determine, you know, the number one and number two most impressing things facing their department-
Or them as residents.
Right?
Yeah.
And in their subject matter expert opinion, come to you as a body and present that to you.
Or they could even just submit them to you-
Okay.
And you just add them in here, so, or-
Sure.
Whatever's easiest, but I would really like them-
No problem.
-to be able to participate as well. Is that okay, gentlemen and lady? Okay, thank you.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
So would it be reasonable, then, to simply go from Councilmember Sampson over to Councilmember Cassidy and just work our way over, doing that approach?
Yeah.
Is that fair? So Councilmember Sampson, you're the lucky winner of the first, you get to select the first goal you'd want to work on, either it being one of the 25 that we already discussed, or one that we didn't discuss, because you've since considered it since our last meeting. And then we can work to make sure that it's SMART, so that we all are working towards something that's specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timed.
Okay, since I know somebody else is going to mention water, and that's the top of everybody's list, so I'm going to mention something else that I'm going to pursue, just because I think it's a huge liability for everyone in town, that would be Pebly Beach Road. We have a lot of activity out on that road, it's a key road for our commerce to keep going in this town, it's a key road for our electricity, our gas, our water, our sewer, I mean, everything is dependent on that road, and a lot of our children and a lot of our guests go in and out of that road, and so we have, anything from bikers to truckers, we have our sewer, everything's out there at Pebly Beach, and I think it's a really dangerous road. It's the most beautiful walk that you can possibly imagine, at six in the morning, or six in the evening, eight in the evening at this time of the year, nine in the evening, it's just a beautiful place to be, but it is as dangerous as all get out, and I think that we need to put some attention on making that road safer, and a more pleasurable experience for people, as opposed to a traumatic experience if you happen to get caught out there on a bicycle, and there's trucks coming back and forth, and you're afraid of going off the cliff on this side, and you're afraid of being hit by a rock on this side. I've spoken to Supervisor Knobby's office, I've spoken to Assemblyman Lowenthal's office, and I've also spoken to Congressman Lowenthal's office, if we could possibly get some help for this financially somehow, and I haven't got much good feedback from either one of those. So we have to keep our feelers out, and we have to maybe get Audra, who's our special grant writer, and have her look for a way that we can find some money within the system to fix that before somebody gets hurt, or even worse.
So that's, yeah, that's great, I think that's pretty specific, you're looking for Pebly Beach Road to become a safer transit corridor for the city, it sounds like to me. I know that our third-party insurance provider will certainly be interested in this one.
Actually, I'll go as far as saying, I think it should be a pleasurable experience to walk out on that road. It shouldn't just be safe.
Okay.
It should be a pleasurable experience.
Okay.
It's a beautiful road.
Please, Scott.
Yeah, let me just, when, I guess it was three years ago, when we had our whole discussion with the island company about opening that road and obtaining insurance for that, they, ParsAC put a number of conditions on obtaining that insurance. And so we've been working with them, and the two things that we still need to do long-term are, we're going to put up fencing along the road, and we've got an application before the Coastal Commission to put fencing all along that road. We have to get it entitled first, the cost estimate for doing that, I think was about, is ranged between 300,000 and 600,000, so that's a source of funding that we need to identify, but in order to be able to do that fencing, we have to get Coastal Commission permission first, so we want to do that. And the other thing that ParsAC really wanted to do was to have a, to take the little walkway that just kind of ends, and ParsAC would like to see that extended all the way through-
Absolutely.
-on Pebly Beach Road. And so, I mean, all the way to the freight.
Absolutely.
So, you know, that is our insurance carrier's goal as well, that will be more costly, and we need to get separate Coastal Commission approval for that. But again, those are two things that we have identified long-term as things that we need to do, the big issue is funding, so we totally agree with that. But I just thought I'd give you an update, that we are working at least on, you know, the fence part of it right now.
Okay, that sounds good. I'd like to see that paved, that walkway go all the way out to Edison, actually, because that way more people would walk to work, and the people who live at Pebly Beach could actually ride their bikes and walk all the way out to there, people who go to the Buffalo Nickel could actually have a nice stroll out to the restaurant, and so on and so forth. Okay, thank you, guys.
So that, to me, is very specific, you're trying to make it safer and a more pleasant experience. We, I think it's measurable, because you, our insurance provider has been involved in this, and they've said, hey, if you install netting, if you have a separate walkway, that's going to make it, in our mind, as the insurance provider, less of a liability. Achievable, yeah, we know that it is, it's just, it's going to be a matter of, the obstacle would be funding, so as you pointed out, we need to get on that, we need to find what the grant options are. Relevant, yeah, absolutely, this is something that we've been talking about for some time, and we're trying to make this a reliable part of our corridor. I guess the one question I would have would be, and this is where I need your help here, is what's our timing? Is this something that we think we can do in a year? Is this something that we can do in two years' time? What do you guys think about that?
Well, just in terms of process, if funding is going to be the issue, it's not until they're funded, so it's dedicating a little bit of staff time to keep on to see what grants money, gas tax money, whatever, can be utilized. I have a question really off the wall, maybe, I don't know. So, right now, our gas tax money is used for what?
State, that's state money, and we get a portion of that, I believe, to help with certain types of roads, and I don't know if we even have any of those types of roads that belong, do we?
Actually, what happened last time is, when, you remember the last agenda, we had the designation of certain city streets-
Right.
-that was to qualify for that funding, because last time we didn't qualify for it, we had to swap with county for it.
Okay.
So now that we've taken the step to designate these roads, we're eligible for more, for more direct funding, so that would be part of it. I do know that for timing-wise, in terms of, there will be two aspects of timing, there's the permission from the Coastal Commission-
Oh, uh-huh.
And then there's the funding. And so right now, we've had our application for about four months before the Coastal Commission to get the fences put up, and what they want is, they want completed plans, and so we've got those plans. Those plans cost the city, I think, about 50,000 bucks to design that. And so, in order to do the second part of it, we have to come up with plans first for the walkway all the way through, and then get Coastal Commission approval, that will, because it's right on the water, that will probably take a year, and during that time-
To process the-
Yeah, 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 I mean, like, for instance-
To send it through Coastal-
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's taken two years for Sea Trek, you know, it took a year, the first time we were going to do the netting on Pebly Beach Road, the wall's taken us, again, four months, and we don't have approval yet. So the Coastal Commission is the big timing issue-
Right.
But during that period, you know, they don't care where the funding is from, so you could pursue those entitlements for that, and then, you know, hope you acquire the funding during that interim period, but they will want to see completed plans.
And this gas tax money, we would have no idea if we're talking about 10 cents or 50,000 dollars?
I don't know offhand, Audra would know that.
We can find out.
Oh, okay, because that could be money used for something like that, then?
Yeah, we had actually set aside the million dollars, we had set aside a million dollars for that, for that work, and then when redevelopment came, we had to spend it very quickly, we used that on Lower Terrace Road.
Oh, okay.
If I could go back to Councilmember Sampson's, I think we also want to add in there, just based upon our prior discussions, also changing it so that there's no passing required on certain parts of it, as well as part of making it safer, right?
Yes.
Placing some signs to-
Yeah, up by Oso Rock, it's the blind corner, we should have a no-passing lane along there, absolutely, I believe so. Actually, one of my constituents came up and actually presented that idea to me, and I thought about it, and that's why I brought it to you, and I thought it was, after I thought about it, I thought it was a good idea, that's why I mentioned it to you, because I thought, yeah, that's a good idea, because I've seen some close calls, and it's the one corner where there's always rocks in the road out there, and people tend to swerve out, so, yeah, it's great.
Is that right, where, like, you come around Avaloni Point, is that the corner that you're talking about?
No.
Oh, this is the one that's down, further down?
It's down, it's like halfway between Avaloni Point and Pebly Beach, and-
Almost the narrowest part, too.
Yeah, that's where the Courage is usually parked out there, Jim Rall's boat, and they call that Oso Rock out there, which, you know, it's where the windsock used to be for the seaplanes, yeah, it's kind of like a blind, it's the one blind turn on that road, it's, the road narrows there, and I just think it would be a good idea to make it a little bit safer for people, there's no reason why we should tempt fate, I believe, at this point, because there's so much traffic now, coming in and out of there, and I think that everybody needs to know where they're supposed to be on that road.
And are we required by the insurance company to have that many falling rock signs out there, or do you think maybe, oh, really?
You notice how Campbell says it with authority?
There was a sale on falling rock signs, as they reported.
There's a certain state, there's a certain state book called the watch handbook, which says, for certain type of signs, how far they have to be, and so we took that literally.
And it's good that the signs behind the K-rail have reflectors on it, so they don't-
I just have another question, with the K-rails being out there, to prevent some of the debris from falling off the hill now, to maintain that and clean it, to keep the rocks from staying back there, if it starts building up too high on the K-rails, it goes over it, is it our responsibility to clean that out, or is that the island company's responsibility?
That's a good question.
That is, that is, okay, here's how it works, pursuant to our insurance with ParsAC, that is one of the conditions that we have to keep it clean.
The city does.
The city does.
Okay.
But, the island company, in our agreement for the easement, they contribute, it's 34,000 dollars a year for the road maintenance, and I believe up to 20,000 dollars a year for hillside maintenance, which could mean the removal of that. And so, and in fact, I have had correspondence with the island company about those costs and the cost reimbursement, but we do have the obligation, but for paying for it, it's my interpretation of our agreement that it's a joint payment, that they have to show us that they're spending money for that and some hillside maintenance.
So if there was debris, it'd be nice to start doing that.
So let me ask you another agreement question, then, so, it's an easement.
Right.
So in that easement agreement, are we allowed to mark no passing where we deem appropriate?
I believe, I believe that would be, I believe we have the right to do it, but again, because it's their property, it makes sense to ask their permission, and frankly, I think if it's for safety, they would be agreeable to that, because-
Sure, maybe it would be, we could have said, hey, this is one of our goals, here's the things we're looking to do, here are all the items we're going to change, we can send them correspondence. So the only question I have, this is great, this, to me, is an example of something that's clear as to what we should be doing, the only question I have, sorry to be this death, is the timing.
Timing.
Yeah, so it sounds like, maybe it might take up to a year for application approval?
Once the application is, the first thing is, is to hire a contractor to design the road-
I don't think you have to.
And then you get a cost estimate.
I think you just continue the design you have.
Well, but the Coastal Commission wants, is going to want plans.
Right, but I think we've got the guy to design the first part of the road out to Avaloni Point, not reinventing the wheel.
Right, oh, absolutely, no, but you have to present the plans to the Coastal Commission. I mean, they, when they looked at what the fence was, they said, we want you to redo the plans to show each K-rail and the fence coming out, and by the way, you didn't ask us permission to put the K-rail up there.
So we'd have to revise them, is that what we'd have to do?
Well, that's what we're doing, that's what we've done right now, but this would be a separate set of plans, that would be, continue with what was there, but just present those plans, and then you file it with the Coastal Commission, and then they take their process.
Well, then, at some point, you will attach for this fiscal year a dollar amount to those plans?
Yeah, so I think what we-
We'd have to do, if that's our goal-
We want to come back, if we adopt this, I'm thinking we're going to probably adopt this as a goal, and then we just, we would give you the cost with this goal.
Okay, all right.
So, do we want to just go through and everybody present a goal, and then we can take an up-down vote on the goals that were presented, do we want to do it that way?
Well, why don't we just put them on to date?
Okay.
Because once we've got, I think we've got, see, we've got to look at, to me, we've got to look at the whole picture and also see the price tag attached to that, because something might be fantastic, but if it's really not realistic, because we're not going to have money, that's just, that's hard for me to make a decision on it.
Okay, so that'd fall under the achievable section, so we can certainly come back and provide you with some additional details as to cost.
Yeah.
And the cost, what we did with the fencing, is not only did we get a cost for putting, included in the design was their estimated cost to actually construct it.
Right.
So that way, we're not going to be able to get that upfront, we're going to have to spend some money for them to design it, but then at that point, you will have a decision point, you'll know what the estimated cost is, and you can decide whether you're going to actually do that walkway, knowing reasonably what the cost of that will be. That will be part of the task we ask the engineer to do when they come up with, when they complete the plans.
Okay.
Am I missing something, aren't we just continuing the walkway that we have, that we already designed, that we already paid for?
Well-
I think we're overcomplicating this. I mean, if we, we had an engineer that designed the walkway up to Avaloni Point, if we continue that design, that's pavers and rails, it's not that complicated of a thing, I don't think.
Well, your problem is, is that you have to go look at the conditions, and you've had some, some of the rocks eroded away, and so if the purpose is, is to have a separate section of the road for vehicles and pedestrians, you're going to have to look at how wide is the road going to be, and how wide is that path going to be, and has it been eroded sufficiently, that you need to put some backfill in there and stuff, so-
Same condition existed on the part that we already put pavers in. You might not have remembered that.
No. That was-
Okay, okay, well, what's your goal?
Two.
Number two.
Balanced budget.
Okay.
Balanced budget?
Yeah. We just, we have a finite amount of reserve available to us, and we can't keep spending, if we keep spending it, we're not going to have any reserve, and we're not going to be here anymore. So I guess the question is, is the timeline for the balanced budget, it doesn't sound like this year, Ben's going to come through for us, so we probably have to get into City Management to get us a balanced, no. And your assessment of the budgeting process that we were going through, Mr. Harvey, when is a balanced budget achievable, no matter how painful?
I think it could be achievable, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, it could be achievable.
So 15, 16?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think that-
Definitely.
But to Councilmember Hernandez's comment, I mean, I think we'd have to give you, there might be some tough choices that people would have to make.
I think the first step before the balanced budget is have a budget. I mean, when, again, refresh my memory, when are we going to get good numbers?
Well, so the process we're trying to go through is, put together our goals, and then bring you the budget after that, so we anticipate adopting, well, presenting a budget for you to consider adopting, realistically, probably September timeframe.
And we'll have all, we'll be all, we'll be up to date.
You will have probably one-year financial statement that you're behind at that time, possibly.
So, I guess, then how can, so a budget, this dollar amount, and how much we have in the bank, let's say, for to simplify it, we won't really know.
We always know how much we have in the bank.
Okay.
We always know how much we're spending, it's just, so it's the financial statements and getting them audited, having this third party go through and say-
Right.
Yeah, that looks like what you've said you've done, you've done.
Right, okay.
That's really what we're talking about, so I think by the time we come to adopt the budget, again, we'll probably be one year behind, but again, we've come quite a ways.
But we know, but we'll know how much money we have-
Oh, yes.
So that we're, okay.
And that'll dictate a lot of the goals that we have, what we can use and what we can't use, correct?
Yeah, and the other thing that we're going to have for you to look at very shortly, we have a draft already, is your interim CFO has pulled together all the financial data for the last two years that the chamber's been asking for, your occupancy numbers, the visitor count numbers, the TOT, the warfage, everything, so he's got the trends, the performance, so we're giving it a final scrub, but that will be available here to you very soon.
Okay.
So you can have a wealth of information that you can draw from.
Okay.
So, okay, going back to the balanced budget with the Mayor Pro Tem, so that's pretty specific, we, in other words, we want no deficit spending, right? Do we want the Prop 218 funds to be healthy?
They should be healthy, we need to figure out a way to get them healthy, which might be flow-to-bond or something, but yeah, it's-
Okay.
We can't have the general fund to support the 218 funds, because we're supposed to operate the city out of the general fund, and the 218 funds are supposed to operate the sewer, salt, and trash, and-
Because I think that we could have a balanced budget sooner than two years, potentially, if the goal is that they have a mechanism to fund themselves established, does that make sense? If we determine what the approach is going to be, it might not be that the funds are yet realized to come in via that mechanism, right? If you decide to flow the bond, if we're, does that sound reasonable?
A way to do it.
Yeah, and I think next month, Warren Divin will be coming back to the council to talk about funding options for those funds, and ways to put a mechanism together to create some revenue for them.
So I'm just, mechanism developed to fund that's Prop 218 funds, measurable, that's pretty measurable, we will know if it's-
Whatever color ink you have, whether it be black or red.
Yeah, that's achievable, again, so we're talking about fiscal year 15, 16, relevant, of course, absolutely, that's one of the things we're supposed to be doing here, and the timing, it's going to start, obviously, now, and, okay.
I don't know if it makes a difference now, Ole, but I had taken goal number two, three, 12, and 21, and kind of combined them, which was basically an overall big picture of organizing finance department, streamlining processes, procedures, so that we could get timely data, balanced budget, sort out-
Yeah.
-department director, most importantly to me, second to having a balanced budget, would be up-to-date data, so that we could make decisions up here based on where we are.
Right, and just so you know, the plan is, now that we, we're in a position where we can, we have that data, now that we're, sorry, monthly is when that will be delivered to you.
Right.
Every month, you're going to get updated numbers, and again, what the council, you know, needs to know is that there's a lag, and then we'll give you this little disclaimer when you get the numbers, so you're aware of this, but it's usually, depending on the revenue, three or six months in some cases, behind, because we're collecting it from another party, to us.
I can appreciate that, but I have a slight discomfort in making certain decisions based on how much money we're spending, not knowing where we are, and that also brings into the picture of the comprehensive contract review, which we're in process on, I'll just, we are in process on that, so I don't know, Ole, if that's fair to amend that goal, or if I should create a separate goal, but I think doing, there's some of those quick wins that we can get right now, if we combine those goals into overall finance.
No, I agree.
Well, just, and again, more horsebeating, I'm sorry, let's just, I want to look at this here, so number two, balanced budget.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all, number three, streamline finance department processes.
Right.
Okay.
Well-
Go ahead.
It's just, it's, it's how do we get to having a, an effective professional finance department, and so it's, I think it's all of, you know, it's all of those things, and if we have the professionals, then we have the balance, like we're getting with the consultants, but it all, I think it all plays in, because in assessing the contracts versus consultants, because that's all a financial situation, too, I mean, so, you know, I mean, you said much my eloquence, but I, but those are all, that's all one big global goal.
I mean, pretty much, let's just give the finance department- I mean, pretty much, let's just give the finance department a great big hug. They need a little, they need some management, they need some support, they need to know the processes that we're, procedures that we're looking for, fill in the holes for wherever they need it. Really, they need some guidance, and they need some, some directions, which comes from the director.
Yeah, and what, and what I've done, just so the council is aware, is that we, we've given Chris, our interim CFO, the free rein to identify those processes that he thinks need to be revamped, and you may have seen from, from the recent update, he's, he's actively doing that.
Right.
Everything from the mundane, wherein, you know, he's insisting where possible that people take direct deposit to eliminate, you know, these separate checks. He, he's looking at our application processes, he's looking at the fees we collect.
Right.
He, he's really looking at everything, trying to draw upon his own experience and bring it here so that we have a better finance department. So I, I would say that's in, that's emotional.
That's a hundred percent in line with the goal that I'm trying to reach here. However, his contract ends in a month, so I want to know what we're doing, what, what we're doing going forward from there.
Sure. We, Chris has indicated that he is, is willing and interested to be here as, as long as we need him to be here. So if that, you know, what, we'll need to come back to you and, and have an extended contract, but he's already said, you know, that's, that's going to be acceptable and interesting to him.
And I guess, so that also leads into my things, contract versus staff? You know, at one point, do we look at how we did our goals and?
Ultimately, yeah, ultimately, we will, we will do a recruitment for that position with the goal of having it be in an in-house position, but that's something that, this time, we're not able to do.
Right.
So.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, but all of those are things to help us balance our budget as well.
Agreed.
You know, so, and so along that line, and I, so I do agree on the balanced budget. I mean, I don't think you, I think she's right. You've got the balanced budget, you've got the number twelve, and you've got the number twenty-one, and that's all just how, that all comes to be a fiscally viable community. And so all of those things are part of becoming a fiscally viable community on a more general goal, and then those might be some of the, then those are more of the steps to get to that.
And, Ollie, this is your goal. Do you have any additional thoughts? It was my goal, but you took it.
Way to hog his goal.
Well, we should have talked before, so we could have gotten our goal straight.
Well, I know.
I, I, I understand the concept of combining, for simplification, but I think in some cases, you'll end up diluting the primary goal. I mean, I think the contract review is a good goal in, in of itself. I mean, it doesn't have, I mean, we could have a balanced budget now and still want to review our contracts. The reserve funds, we could have a balanced budget now and still not have, I mean, I think these are all noble goals in and of themselves, and they're part of, they might be part of the overall issue, but they're independent of it, I think.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to figure out where we, where we want to go on this. I mean, we could certainly.
But I don't want to lose those goals if we only get three apiece.
It's okay, it's okay. Let, I, I think it would be fair to say, leave the goal at balance.
Fine.
Balance a budget, and then.
Fine, and we'll go back and talk.
We'll talk again about.
Come back to him again.
The finance.
The other goals, okay.
After that.
Okay. That seems pretty clear to me. Any other questions on this goal? All right. Okay, Mayor, you are up.
Okay, so back again, though, because you, like you said, water. Do we all agree that water is a goal, and water resource is a goal, so we don't, none of us have to use our time on water?
Well, I'd like one of you to sacrifice it.
Yeah, one of us has to sacrifice.
Somebody should, so we can get it down. Seems to me that it's, you know, one of the most pressing issues we have, and it would be worth our discussion today.
Okay, then, then I'll, that'll be mine. And, and the way it was written is about.
This is number four, Mayor?
Yep.
Number four, okay, very good.
Okay. Yes.
I'm sorry, I mean, I just wanted to.
No, I just said yes, that's what it is.
Okay, okay. So pursue freshwater resources. It says here, before two years, the city will figure out water issues and look at options like reclaim water and desalination for our homes. I believe that there's probably more to this that you have indicated to me in other forums, and one of them was you wanted to pursue a community services district.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that part of this goal as well?
Yes, that's one of the water.
That's not diluting that goal, that's just supporting that goal.
Nice use of words there. Okay, so CSD.
And it could be water storage and all the other stuff. I mean, no, but yes.
That's part of it.
That's all part of it. I'm just making sure I say it.
No, please, I mean, this, this is, this is helpful to us, so just, please, all these things, you know, if you don't mind just saying, all those things that you would expect as part of that'd be great, because.
Okay, decel water storage, dredging the reservoirs.
Dredge, dredge, dredge Thompson Reservoir and Bull Rush Reservoir.
Are they allowed to comment?
It's a public meeting.
It's a public.
I'd say so.
Come on up, whoever that was.
Can I just run there before we forget reclaimed water?
Yeah, sorry?
Reclaimed water.
Yeah, that's on there, definitely.
Kevin Strick, one twenty-nine olive. You know, one thing that I would really, I, I've heard bits and pieces, and all of them are probably good solutions, you know, I mean, as far as the water, be it reclamation, drilling a well, whatever. But, boy, I'll tell you what, we got to get somebody to pull this all together, you know, as divided as this is, it's going to get real disjointed real fast. So I think it's important to consolidate, because at the end of the day, I think what's going to happen, you're going to put this all up on a board somewhere, and you're going to say, this is going to cost twenty million, this is going to cost ten million, this is going to cost two million, or whatever, and there's only going to be so much that we can do. So rather than waste a lot of time and have everybody burn out, I think it's really important that you, as, as the city, pull this together so that these different groups can be coordinated, you know? Otherwise, we're going to spend a lot of time and get nowhere, I'm afraid, so.
And I, I think that's a good point, Kevin, and I think we, we will have to, I mean, we're spitting out all of the possibilities, but there, there maybe is the reality that only two or.
Right, right.
Because I know the, the reclamation thing, we're definitely moving ahead, you know, we're, and, and I don't know who else is going to carry the ball. I mean, if you're going to carry the ball on the, on the, the community water district, I don't know if that's something you're going to champion, or who's going to champion that one, but we don't have the staff to do all of this.
Well, I mean, I, I think that, yes and no, right? We, we could certainly, so, so there is a, a consortium that is still out there.
Right.
And we, there's a consultant who's actually attached to the consortium, and it, I think, I, I met with him when I was up in Sacramento at a PARSEC meeting separately not too long ago, and his thought was, hey, I think it's time to bring the, the consortium back together. We'll probably have to look at things like contributing some, some funding to, to get this thing going again, so that he doesn't have to work pro bono, because this is some technical stuff, we're going to be looking for his guidance as to how to move forward. You will also want to look at things like availing ourselves of some legal expertise in this area as well.
Yes.
So, you know, part of this direction, I think, should be, you know, tell me to see, see what's involved with putting together the island consortium to start this process up again, gather up the players, bring them in. You know, it's pretty clear from you guys, for me, as to what you want to do. I think we just have to share that with the other members of the consortium and see if the goals are still united, right? Last time the consortium met was what, two or three years ago?
Yeah. And I've met with several participants in the consortium already, and that is the, that was going to be one of my requests, is that we revisit that. And also, I'm meeting with a couple folks from the city of Clermont, and for the council, if you didn't know. I was going to get this. There's a section of BB&amp;K who is currently in the process of working with the city of Clermont to do just this, so to set up their own water district, so.
Much larger dollar amount.
Yeah, actually, actually, it's a hostile takeover in that one. The water company does not want to be taken over, and so we're looking at, I think it's estimates between eighty-five and a hundred and fifteen million dollars to take over, and there's a threat of eminent domain there. In other words, we could actually just take it.
Right.
And so that's, I've probably got, well, we have a lot.
And, and I'm not suggesting that anyway. I, I just am, have been asked to come and learn a little bit about what it, what their process is, what they're going through, and, and how this is affecting the city, so I'm certainly, I'm happy to do that.
Considering how many questions are on the table that have not been answered, and the obvious mismanagement of our natural resources by Edison, I think that we need to pursue this as a city and make this our own, because we're not getting any answers. We're getting nowhere with Edison. They haven't come up, they haven't been forthright with us, and they haven't given us the answers we need, so we don't even know where we stand right now. But we do know that we're going into a water crisis, it could get pretty severe. So from my, from my seat right here, I would definitely look into the community water district for the city, but in the meantime, there's things we could do since we're in the middle of a drought, which is dredge, and we need to actually look into quadrupling the output of our desalin, desalinization system. I talked to a gentleman just the other day, matter of fact, Mike introduced me to him, and he makes desalinization systems, and he said he would be happy to come over and give us, give us a rundown of exactly what his company makes, and how much they, how much his systems are. I mean, he had a system for as cheap as five hundred thousand dollars, and it, and it put out a hundred thousand gallons per day. So it's, it's, I don't think we're that far off on this, from, from jumping right in and getting this going, and making sure that our city has the water that it needs, because we're shipping out a lot of water to the West End right now, and there's literally other cities that we don't even know about down at the, down at the West End called Emerald Bay and Holland's Landing, and they're, they're literally developing those places like little cities. It's off the grid down there, and that's why so much water attention is being put on that area. And it's, and it's, you know what? It's, you could, you could put the blame on us, as citizens of Avalon, for allowing Edison to put us in this predicament right now. But it's, it's us five up here sitting in these chairs that have to come up with the solution with the help of our constituents and our advisors. And I think it's a tangible goal, and I think it's definitely at the top of this list out of all these things. And I'm into doing whatever we have to, to make this happen. And we got to just go down the list as far as decrease, desalinization, dredge, dredge the aquifers. I'm not really into drilling into this bedrock well, because I do believe that drilling the bedrock well will possibly contaminate, or could possibly contaminate, our entire underground water system. And I'm done.
We will have some, I don't know if we want to wait till the regular meeting, because there's probably, we, we have an exciting announcement from the state as far as decel is concerned. We're, we're going to basically have a demonstration unit over here probably by the end of this month.
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain that later. Later, I've got a whole list of water things that are going on, but we're getting a mobile decel plant in a week and a half.
Okay, let's go to goals, continue.
Okay, so I think that on this one, I guess, two, two questions.
Oh, come on.
The measurability and the time specificity of this, I need your guidance as to how we're determining whether we're achieving this goal. What's a, what's a measure? How, how do you, how do you know we're on track? What, what's our, what's our, I mean, I think one of the first steps would, would be, would seem, would be trying to reestablish this island consortium, right? Am I thinking that's probably accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
But the, okay, and, and I don't know how long it's going to take to get them together, but, you know, we talked about the, the reclamation and the pipes that are already been laid by Edison in nineteen seventy-five. I think it would behoove us with our cameras to find out, first of all, from Edison, whoever, where those pipes were laid, if anybody knows, and try to see how we can open those up-and-run cameras to see if that, those pipes are viable and able to be relined.
Hmm.
Because that could solve, that could be a quicker fix to reclamation. Reclaim water.
Right, that's already in place. It's a part of the infrastructure that's already in place.
Part of them.
Part of.
And, and if we, and if we don't, if, we need to know if those pipes are good, because if not, we have to either leave those and put in some more.
And we have Dave, Dave Cleary here to, that works with the city, and he's an expert at these things, and lining pipes, and I'm sure he could give us some good input on, once, once we do find the water system, he could give us some good input on how, what the condition of those pipes actually are.
Does remember that man West the other day, Cindy, he was talking about, he had relined some of those transite pipes before. So, I mean, that just seems like a quick thing to me, I don't know, as part of this goal, because I believe we are all thinking reclamation is a great.
I think that's part of the reclamation section of the goal.
Right.
But until the rest of that infrastructure is completed, I don't, I don't, I don't know what we could do with that today until we figure out what's happening with all the reclaimed water, where it's going, how it's going to go, how it's going to be used, and that's a bigger part of the whole changing, potential changing of the infrastructure, whether we move from saltwater to reclaimed water altogether. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, and the group that I'm working with is, all they're saying is, you, we need to decide the quality of water we want and the quantity of water we want, and then we can kind of proceed. But I don't know, I, what, if, if it seems as though reclaimed water is one of the ways we want to go, and just making a couple of definitions, I don't know how long that should take. To me, it should take a couple of months to figure out where we're going with reclaimed, if we want to. I mean, that seems like the quickest fix with the longest, with the longest benefit to the community, but.
Except you need a freshwater source if you want to go the whole reclaim route, where you replace the saltwater system, you need to recharge the saltwater system, and you also have to get over to county health saying, we want to have dual plumbing with reclaimed water inside the house.
And county, and the people that I've been speaking to say county health, and since fifteen, ten years ago, they've really relaxed those rules. It's much better because reclamation is going on all over the place now, so they're saying that the, the steps aren't as complicated as they were before.
Irrigation, of course, but I think dual plumbing is still an issue with them, where you have the, you have the reclaimed water inside the house, that's what, that's the.
No, and that, okay, well, you can come to our reclaimed water meetings and talk with them. That would be great, I mean, because we're, we're kind of getting excited and moving, and, and then if, you know, how many people have to be in a room before we finally say, okay, we can go this way, or how many consultants does it take to finally say, okay, now it's okay? Because some things just, you know, when Edison was going to do it, is that what stopped him, because it was going to go into two systems?
No.
What stopped him?
Field of Joe Machado.
By his pond?
No, they were, they were relocated, and they needed to relocate a water line when they were building the softball field up there, and Edison didn't have the money to relocate this line, or didn't want to pay for relocating the line, so Edison picked up their ball and went home, and that's where the whole thing fell apart. So we had to redesign the sewer plant from a tertiary plant into a saltwater plant, which we have to unredesign if we want to go to tertiary treatment.
Right, right.
So I mean, it's, I think, I, I think a noble goal would be for us to achieve dual plumbing systems in Avalon with reclaimed water. And if we start off with that goal, that means we've got to see what we have to do to the sewer plant, we've got to see what we have to do to county health to get him inside the house, we've got to see what we have to do to the distribution system, both within Avalon, and getting the water from Pebble Beach up to top of Avalon Canyon, and you know, welding it up.
Okay, write that goal down, that's a good one.
So what, what was the goal?
Repeat that always.
We want to have, we want to replace the saltwater system with reclaimed water, so we need to look at what it's going to take.
You know what, I think, to me, that sounds like a, a noble but separate goal, I think, you know, because, okay, what I think we're, I, I kind of see three goals here. I see one, explore forming a community service district.
Yes.
That being a very important goal, probably all on its own, because that's going to require trying to purchase water assets that don't belong to the city.
Right.
Because that's gonna require trying to purchase water assets that don't belong to the city.
Or just take them over.
Yeah, so that, to me, we should just park that as a separate goal. Okay. Then I also see a goal of identifying, and you've already told me this, identify freshwater resources. You know, because along the way, while we're trying to form a CSD, we can do things like have the state help us to get this mobile unit over here. We can, so that would be a separate one, too. And we could certainly make Edison, until something changes, aware of additional resources. So, sorry, CSD, identify freshwater resources. And then I think, water reclamation. Because, I mean, they're all related, I agree. But just to make them clearer.
Sure, good.
And we got our five goals.
We do. We do.
Sorry, Cindy.
Okay, so, well, but no, hold on, we have some work to do. So, let's start with community service district here really quick. That's pretty specific. We'd be talking about, I think, one of two things. Either forming a separate governmental body that has oversight over the water. Or the other option is you could choose to, what's called municipalize the water, where in a city department takes it over. They're similar but different. So.
JPA is part of the first one?
Yep.
Okay.
What would be, what would be the direction?
I think you've got to look at both of those at the same time.
Come back and give pros and cons?
Yeah, and a JPA versus RL, yeah.
Measurable, yes, it is. Achievable, maybe, depends, we have to see. And I'm not being flippant, I mean, you know, we need to, because it's a process, right? And so, Edison is in the process of selling its water and gas assets currently. They've got an exclusive agreement with CorEx to sell it to them. So, you know, that is in motion. And then the way that we would have to get involved with that is we would have to intervene in what's called the 851 filing at the CPUC level. We'd have to step in and say, wait, hold on, we don't want you to make the sale. We'd like to explore a community service district or a municipal water department, and here's why. And convince the Public Utility Commission that it's in the best interest of the people here.
Right, okay.
So, that's, that's an obstacle that I'm, a potential obstacle that I'm just telling, making you aware of. You probably already know that. Relevant, yeah, we all get that. So, before Edison can move to the 851 process, they have to finish the rate case that they've been involved in for about five years now, I believe. Bill Delane, our Edison rep, told me that, I think that it's on the agenda for next month. Is Bill here? Yeah, yes, next month? Okay, so the CPUC is considering the general rate case, the proposed decision, next month. There's a number of things they could do. They could move it out, they could ask for more information, they could make a decision. So, we'll have to monitor that because that has to be decided before the 851 filing begins. So, I guess the timing, what I'm saying is the timing on this is lengthy, then all the while, I'd need to gather up those island consortium folks and bring them together and see if, because things change. And, you know, in two years since they last met, there've been a lot of happenings on the island that maybe, maybe somebody doesn't want to participate anymore.
What does the island consortium consist of? Who does it consist of?
Councilmember Sampson, it used to be the city, the island company, the conservancy, USC, the island camps, and the Hamilton Cove Homeowners Association.
And the chamber.
And the chamber, thank you.
Okay. What about the residents of Avalon? I don't see anywhere on here where they're.
Well, the city, the city was representing the residents.
Okay, the city, the city council?
Yes, city of Avalon, yeah.
Okay.
Right, okay, so, all right, so I'm just gonna put the timing on this. This could be like a, I mean, realistically, this could be a two-year thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, beaten to death there. Moving on to the second one, freshwater resources. I think this is a little easier, right? We're just looking for any type of additional freshwater resources, right? We're trying to figure out.
Other options.
Say again, Councilmember Hernandez?
Just our options.
Figure out the options, right, what the options are.
What options are out there that we can.
All right, so that's measurable, and I think that's definitely potentially achievable, relevant. Timing of that, that can just be ongoing, I think, right? We just need to keep, keep that in our daily thoughts. This is something that we're all working on. Okay, so that seems pretty self-explanatory. Okay, now, one I think I'm gonna need some help on is the reclaimed water goal. So, well, let's start with a, not obviously, so are we looking to, looking to potentially move to a reclaimed water system, right? That's the goal?
Yes.
Yes, and our saltwater.
To replace our saltwater system with a reclaimed water system, more specifically.
Correct, yes.
All right. So, right, we do, we do, through the work of your kitchen cabinet group and also our involvement and other sanitation district experts, we're gonna know if it's achievable or not, right? We know that there are some potential obstacles.
Yes.
Okay, we know why it's relevant. Timing on that.
Two years is fine.
Okay.
If it happens before, great, but.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, there are three goals you just came up with right there, I think. Seems pretty specific. Okay.
Three individual goals under water.
All water-related but all their own, I mean, I think these all stand on their own.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, I think we're on Councilmember Hernandez, right?
We are.
Okay.
The infrastructure for the city. It's always seems to be, the one that's been, we've been kicking around for a few years now. And we're still in the same spot as we were a couple of years ago about the infrastructure, about how we're gonna pay for it, how we're not charging developers who are developing, that kind of thing. How are we gonna carry on? We're building all this stuff, but we have the same old infrastructure, and it's getting that capacity now. And I think it needs to be addressed as soon as possible, in my opinion.
No, you're right on.
Great.
And you break those down by the mole, the sewer drain plant, the landfill, whatever else there is there?
Yeah, and I also, I also heard, you know, coming back with some proposed development fees, so that when you.
Correct.
You're paying that upfront when you propose a development, so that we're able to not have to one-off negotiate every single thing that comes to us, right?
Correct.
Sewer, salt, landfill, we can certainly, yeah, all the infrastructure that goes with it.
The mole.
Mole, right.
The fuel dock.
Well, the city hall still stands.
Certainly know how it's relevant. It is achievable, we can do this. That's specific.
We have to do that.
We can start this immediately. We can start looking at what we can put into our code to get this going. Timing, is this like, is this probably a one to two-year thing to get this up and running? What does everybody think about that?
Sure.
I would like to see as soon as possible. I mean, one year might be a good thing. I mean, we've been talking about it for the last two years, for sure. And we're still in the same spot, so, you know, as soon as possible.
As a suggestion.
Maybe six months.
Within a year, we have some mechanisms in place so that we can start.
Some goals towards.
So, we can start collecting and maybe if we're not completely yet recouping everything that we need to sustain it, well, at least we've got the mechanisms in place so that we can be on that road. Because currently, as you know, we're just losing the battle.
Okay, so, I'm a little confused. So, you're talking about development fees, or you're talking about fixing each of these areas? Or both?
Yeah, well, the fees gotta come from somewhere. We get.
What I heard was that he's looking for us to develop mechanisms where we are able to support our infrastructure. So, I think that's a number of different things. It's development fees, it's user fees, it's grants.
How are we gonna?
You know, make, well, okay, so maybe we should distill this a teeny bit.
Because some of these things, don't they, don't we have some things that need to be fixed sooner than later that we just can't wait on? Or no, everything is?
Well, okay, good point. So, we could, in this, not saying it has to be this way, but you could say a separate goal is the mole. And a separate goal could be the fuel dock. They are massive projects all on their own. There's no doubt about it.
Because the timelines would be different for some of those.
They are.
Correct, but they all need to, some progress to be made.
So, maybe as a suggestion, maybe we could, because it's a good point, we could have a goal of infrastructure sustainability, okay? That's what I'm hearing Councilmember Hernandez say. And then another goal is the mole, rehabilitating that. Another goal is rehabilitating, rehabilitating the fuel dock. Is that, yes.
How about just a simple 10-year capital plan? That goes out over the next 10 years. We list all the projects, when we think we can get them done, and where we're thinking we're gonna fund them. Because basically, that's what we're talking about, is we're talking about capital projects.
Okay, we can do that, too.
Well, that's where we did a bunch of, when I did it.
And I think the other thing was, or emergency money for something that happens out of the blue. We get a leak, we get, you know, something comes up. Yeah, making sure that we have funds for emergency projects.
Reserves.
Reserve ready for that, for emergency projects, things that go down. We get leaks, we get this and that. Do we have money on this for that?
Sort of. Depends on how big the problem is.
There, the issue again is for the infrastructure. It's, if it's the Prop 218, we don't have the money for that, we don't have the reserves. It's taken from the general fund. Part of the goal is to have a discussion about funding mechanisms to be able to self-support those funds.
Correct. So, maybe 10-year capital plan for infrastructure, does that sound reasonable? And we could, then we could encapsulate everything in there?
Good, only well said.
We could put all that in there?
Yep.
But it's good, that way we're, you know, just taking a holistic view of everything we need to, and it's all timed. And so, you'd have some things that are moving parallel past, some things that are further out.
That would be fine.
Okay.
What we did in Lake Arrowhead, because we just went through the same exercise about what do we need to do, what we don't, we developed a 10-year plan. It was, and the first thing we did is a capital improvement plan for the whole community. And then we estimated how much it would cost to build all those things. We set priorities. And now then, we're going through a rate study to establish rates to support the 10-year capital plan. So, it's coming up with a list first, coming up with the rates that'll support all you want to build, and then going through the long process of getting everyone to agree to pay those rates.
Right, right, okay, good.
Yeah, and to stick with one project, too. I'm not a big fan of starting one project, you go to another project, and you're not getting done either way. I'd rather see us like, stick to one. We're gonna pick one priority, let's go for that one, finish that priority, complete it, then go on to the next one. I would like to see that somewhere along the line. Instead of spreading ourselves out so thin that we never get anything accomplished or finished.
Got it. Okay, that's great. Okay, real quick, before we run out of time. Your favorite comment.
Of course, Cindy.
Well, my first three that I had already put together are on here, so I'm feeling really good right now. I guess, not as urgent as some of these others, but if I'm picking from our 21 items here, I would really like to do a comprehensive transportation review of town. And.
Item 92.
I'm doing that, of course.
I honestly believe that this needs more, a lot more discussion. And I don't know that we have enough time for that now. I think there's been several items brought forward by each of us that kind of go in line with the transportation review. So, I don't want to say that my particular items are the most important, but we do have an ordinance that's about 35 years old, if I understand that correctly. And I also, I just am uncomfortable with the number of vehicles that we have in town in general, the use of the vehicles, types of vehicles. And I'm saying that in terms of how we're handling temporary permits, how we're handling on-service permits, public service permits, it's sort of a review of all of that. I think our, we had talked pretty substantially in the past, just in different conversations about being a more walkable community, a more people-friendly community, and more available and easier resources and whatnot. So, looking at, I know Jordan spent a great amount of time looking at our transportation routes, and I know we're looking at the e-buses and all of that. So, I guess, I don't know how you want to deduce that down to a very specific goal, but I'm looking for some, some just transportation review.
Right.
That's a good, yeah, so I think, no, don't be sorry. I think what I might recommend, we have six goals right now. I think we start the next discussion off on this goal, and we flesh it out. Because I've heard you say about, it's kind of like the water thing. I think there are probably three or four specific goals within the greater transportation umbrella. And I would want you guys to help me understand what it is you want us to be doing to get that, to achieve that goal, those goals. Does that seem reasonable?
Absolutely, I'm great with that. I'm happy to stick with what we have right now.
Okay. So, what we're going to do is, Denise, we're going to need to get, if we can, as early as next week, another session just like this, if we can handle it. Or we can do the same thing that we've done this time and start.
It's up to you guys.
Earlier before the next meeting. You mean, what's your pleasure?
I don't have my calendar, but sure.
Remember, you do have an extra week between council meetings down.
Yes.
I mean, I think we made really good progress today. I think this is, I mean, we, you know, we're, we know we're gonna start the discussion next time, we can just jump right in and start knocking the stuff out.
Okay, perfect.
And then, and then we'll gather up the goals, and then we'll vote them up and down and see. Some might not end up making it in. You guys, your majority might not want them.
Do you want a morning or night meeting?
I could do it anytime, because I'm gonna be out of town Tuesday for six days. So, if you want to, Monday?
Before the drill, or Tuesday before drill. Tuesday, flash. Tuesday before the meeting, fine with me.
No, but we're talking like next week.
That's August 5.
That'd be August 5?
Oh, you're talking about next week.
I'm talking about next Monday. If we want to, if we want to use a special.
Monday I'm working.
Okay, not Monday, and Tuesday through Friday, he's over town.
I could do Monday morning.
You was working.
Oh, you're working, sorry.
We could just tag it in front of the next council meeting, like we did this time, if you didn't want to.
But that's not till August 5.
I like that.
That's a long time away. That's three weeks away.
What if I send three dates to each of you and see who can make it?
Why don't we do that?
Same reasonable?
Is mornings usually better for you, Rich, or afternoons? Well, what are you, what are the days that you don't work?
The afternoon.
Okay, so let's shoot for afternoons. Does that kind of work with you, later afternoons? And then Cindy, you're pretty, gonna be kind of flexible?
I'll be flexible.
Okay. Okay.
I'm flexible.
Okay, so, Mayor, what I'd recommend is we just take a brief bio break before the 6 o'clock meeting, if that's acceptable to you guys, just to make sure we're.
Any quick comments from the group? Public comment? No? Hi, Mr. Bombardier. Good, nice to see you. Yeah, okay, then we're taking a little break.
15 minutes, and then we'll, you can leave, real quick.
I'd like to call the City of Avalon Council meeting, order for Tuesday, July 15th. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Cindy, would you be so kind as to?
Sure. Thanks. Does your hand over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you may be seated. I just had something I wanted to read, that I kind of reworded and paraphrased from former Chief Justice Charles Evans Hughes during President Roosevelt's reign. We, the Avalon City Council, are not here as masters or mistresses, but as servants. We are not here to glory and power, but to attest our loyalty to the commands and restrictions laid down by our citizens, the people of Avalon, in whose name and by whose will we in whose name and by whose will we exercise our brief authority." Do we have roll call?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Do we have any present, I'm sorry, do we have any announcements or written communication?
We, we have both this evening, Mayor. We have two announcements. One, housekeeping, I'm making a recommendation that you take the housing authority meeting last in order this evening. It's our only closed session, as you know, and that way the public won't be subjected to having to wait for us to do that and come back. So just a suggestion. Secondly, just wanted to announce that the city attorney's office and Scott Campbell in particular, were notified by the Daily Journal, which is a legal newspaper that covers all of California, that the work undertaken on behalf of the City of Avalon that resulted in the city's being taken off the Heal the Bays Beach Bummer List is one of the top achievements by lawyers in the state of California this past few years. And an article will appear shortly recognizing BBK and Mr. Campbell for their efforts in that matter. There you go, that's the announcement I have tonight. We have two written communication. And, you know, I don't know if everyone, I think everyone received a copy in their inbox. I just want to acknowledge it. It's a letter from Catalina Island Vacation Rentals, Mr. Kevin Striggi, the CEO, discussing their water conservation efforts. It's a fairly long letter, so I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but it's certainly available for anybody that'd like to see it. I think you all received one in your inbox. Secondly, I hope that you received on your chair or at your desk an email from the Harbor Master. It pertains to item number 11 on tonight's agenda. Okay, and then that was all that I have.
Announcements? Anybody, well, presentations?
We do not have any presentations this evening.
Oral communications? Are there members of the audience who wish to address the council on items that are not on the agenda?
I just have two announcements from the Recreation Department. And one is to invite the community this Friday to our celebrity basketball game up at the school gym. That's Sterling Smooth Forbes, the former Globetrotter, and his buddies against our Avalon All-Stars, led by Mayor Marshall, or assisted by Mayor Marshall. And, and a whole, a whole list of characters that you'll love to see play, including Kevin Striggi. Thanks, Kevin. So please come out and support the City of Avalon and Avalon High School Basketball. That's, again, this Friday, July 18th. That's 7 o'clock in the school gym. It's $10 for adults, and for kids 12 and under, it's only $5. It's, it's going to be great fun. So we'll see you this Friday for that. And then this coming Monday is another movie on the beach. And we're showing in partnership with Choices and sponsored by the Lions Club, all the movie on the beach serieses for the summer. It's going to be at 8:30, once it gets dark. But come at 7:30, and you can see a group of local kid musicians play on the beach beforehand. So 7:30 for the band, 8:30 for the movie. And the movie is going to be The History of Future Folk, which is a great family movie.
And if I could add on that topic, Ken Putnam, the owner of Luau Larry's, has agreed to not have live music during the movie on the beach. So that's going to be nice, because you can sit there and you won't have anything coming over the movie and you're trying to watch it. And we thank him, we thank Ken for that.
That's wonderful. And then another great local shout-out I'd like to also mention is Luis Rubio, who lives here in town, has also agreed to help with adding additional sound for the movies on the beach, which is such a great donation as well. So it's a wonderful partnership. We're all out there, Choices, in the city, and the Lions Club, just trying to offer great free events. So that's next Monday. Thanks.
Kevin Striggi, 129 Olive Street. I was just asked to speak to this just a little bit, so that the public kind of knew, I guess, because some people had asked me to speak to it a little bit. But just to bring everybody up to speed a little bit from the vacation rental side. As you know, this, this whole water shortage, it's a, it takes a community effort to get everybody together. We get a lot of, we have been getting a lot of comments, not only by locals, but from people over town as to what we're doing to, to help alleviate the problem as well. So, you know, which is good, because we're finding out, believe it or not, that the guests that are coming, for the most part, from over town, are in the same situation that we are, in their individual communities. So their knowledge of the situation is good, and they're taking very well to the idea that we have to conserve. So, you know, there's always anecdotal information about, you know, vacation rental places use more water than anywhere else. Well, about 10 years ago, we did an actual study to where I had our people go out and read meters of full-time residents and vacation rentals side by side. And we, we went through and we analyzed the data to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples. And not surprisingly, I guess, we found out that in, well, in all cases, the vacation rental actually uses less per person per day than full-time. That's not surprising, understanding that, you know, we work, we have to take showers every day, we have to wash our clothes, we have to use dishwashers on a daily basis and all of this. So anyway, that was actual information that we went out and looked at. We also did, I, I got real concerned when we got into this and to figure out exactly how much water is being used by a vacation rental. And taking SCE's information, as well as, we took a number of incidents where we actually went out and read the meter when people are staying here. And for the most part, now, you're going to know that there, or you have to realize that there's always variances on this stuff. But for the most part, the 24 to 25 gallons per day per person is pretty normal. So, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I think it's, it's pretty much in line. That being said, we certainly do have to get out and do our part. We have gone in through the years, just about all of the places have either had low-flow showerheads, or we've actually gone in and put in SCE showerheads. Most of our owners upgrade their places all the time, so what do they do? They put in more efficient dishwashers and washing machines, so forth, so on. About 11 years ago, we took, it used to be that a vacation rental would wash their linens in-home, you know? We took that out. We now send, or starting 11 years ago, for the most part, we send all of our linen to Rock down at Catalina Laundry, which, as you know, he reclaims his water. So we took that service out and sent it elsewhere. So, you know, and we're doing our part. We're notifying guests, number one, before they get here, they get an actual letter that we're going into this, we're, we're having this water shortage issue in town. So they get a letter before they get here. When they get here, we also give them the, the SCE flyers, go right on their packets as they're coming in. Our people have all been well-versed in, in the questions and everything. So we have that discussion with the guests as they're coming in. So anyway, I just wanted to dispel a little bit that we're just opening up the gates and letting them come in. This is very serious for us. Guess what? When we do 25% reduction come September, and, and if we go to 50%, the only way in the end, we, we're not going to be able to conserve our way out of this. You know what I'm saying? We're going to have to shut the gate, is what we're going to have to do. If we have to shut the gate and, and back off on, on the visitor experience, or the visitor coming over, that's going to reverberate throughout the economy, our local economy. So, you know, we're taking this very serious, and I want that understood, I guess, that I want to be in business a year from now. And so, anyway, I...
Thank you for sharing those. Yes, very good. And I'm sure other businesses, they came up, would be sharing similar, so that's wonderful.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Bill Delane, Local Public Affairs Region Manager for Southern California Edison here in Avalon. It was a great lead-in, really, for some of the materials I want to share with council this evening. I'll keep my comments very, very brief. Have two documents I'd like to distribute to council. The first is a written response to the question, "Will you explain the water allocation process for customers requesting a new or modified water service in the context of our tariffs?" That's something council's been interested to see, providing that this evening for your, your review. And really, that supports the number two document, and that's the formal announcement of the open house scheduled here in Avalon, day after tomorrow, Thursday evening, at the Avalon School Gymnasium. It's an open house that's about the water system that serves Catalina Island and, and, of course, the City of Avalon. It's an opportunity for, for any member of the public, and I would certainly encourage council to attend as well, to talk one-on-one with subject matter experts on all aspects of our, not just the water system, but all the services Southern California Edison provides on the island. It is an open house format, it's not a three-hour program. Those that are interested can come and go, get their questions answered. So very free-form, very, very customer-friendly. That will be followed next week on Tuesday, July 22nd, with public meetings about the water system, the water situation here in Catalina. 10 a.m. to noon, and 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. Tuesday evening. That will be at the Avalon School Auditorium, and will be in more of a presentation format. So again, would encourage attendance of the public, city leadership, our business community, certainly, to try and find time to, to attend. But all this is, is in that very sincere effort to communicate to city government, the people who live, work, and recreate in Avalon, the situation and the tools that we all might have to work through this, this drought. So, thank you. Hope to see you on Thursday evening.
Bill, and, oh, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
No, I was just wondering on this second meeting that you have on the 22nd, is there any way, because I've had people stop me on the street, asking if you videotape any of your meetings so we could broadcast it out, so everybody's on the same page? There's people who can't get out of their houses, people who can't go there. Is that a possibility that you guys could provide for us, for the city? Or does that seem feasible at all?
You know, it's a very interesting proposition, really, to get that word out to as many people as, as we can. And I've already asked that question, so I'll get an answer for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. People want to listen to what you guys got to say.
Absolutely.
And I noticed that the, the notices in English and Spanish, will there be Spanish peo, a Spanish speaking person?
Indeed, there will, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
There's no dumb questions.
On page two of your tariff revision handout, under number two of the revising limitations on water fit for drinking in pools, spas, and fountains to permit the use for drinking, to maintain water levels and ensure the operation of the recirculation equipment? What exactly does that mean?
It's more clarification language that's always been in the tariff. I would have to look at that more closely to respond directly to you, unless...
The man has the answer.
Yeah, what that is, is the way it was previously written, it prohibited people from not only filling new pools, but maintaining the water level in their existing pool. And so we just provide a clarification that if you have a pool or a water fountain, you can maintain the level in it. So there isn't, you're not damaging your pool equipment, you're not damaging the plaster in the pool or the, or the fountain. So it, it's really something we just want to clarify in the revisions on the tariff.
Thanks.
I'm just curious, do you have any idea how many variance requests that Edison's received from citizens of Avalon?
Just back up.
I don't have an exact number, because we, we're, we're getting them in daily. At the last count, we had approximately 225.
And you're just responding to those as you can, right?
Yeah, we're, we're sending out acknowledgement letters to our customers that were in receipt of them. There is a slight delay in our receipt of them, because they are going to our Rosemead office and then coming to us internally. So for some customers, if you haven't received your acknowledgement letter, it may be from that delay that we're experiencing with our inter-office mail.
That's exactly what I wanted, thanks.
So there, so Rosemead is creating the variance letters based on this data, or locally?
We're processing them locally.
Okay.
But the, the returned letters are being sent to our headquarters. Return envelope section, so.
Thank you, Chad.
And I would add too, that at the open house, questions about the variance application process, how to do that, we'll have folks there that can talk one-on-one and walk people through that process. So be real valuable.
It was, it was my understanding that there would be a little more advertisement activity and propaganda towards Edison's effort towards informing the public that we are in a water shortage, and that there would maybe even be like a logo and maybe a slogan, and banners, and a lot more than I'm seeing out. Do you have any idea, are you guys going to go ahead with this, or is this just something that you guys told us?
No, I'm real pleased to be able to share with you, presented to city manager, the final artwork on co-branded messaging pieces, co-branded between the City of Avalon and Southern California Edison, that will be available for, for restaurants, for hotels, banner for events, hopefully at the Catalina Express Terminal. Just good, steady messaging to people who are traveling to Avalon and Catalina Island to build that awareness that, you know, come over here and enjoy, but watch your, be careful with your water use. So, absolutely, good question.
Good positive message then.
And Councilmember Sampson, if I may, Bill gave me copies, which I'm going, I mean, documents. I'm going to copy for you, give you, each so you can see what all those examples look like. He gave this to me yesterday, I will get them to you.
Great, most appreciated.
And, and what do you think the turnaround time is in production of all of that?
In production now.
Okay.
And, you know, and certainly, the goal is to have all that available prior to the event.
Prior to when?
Prior to August 11th.
Okay, okay.
Page two.
And at the meetings, did you get the little low-flow heads for those meet? Because there was a discussion that maybe those would be available, they're handing out at your public meetings. Do we know if we're going to get those?
They got them.
The 200 or so?
Are you talking about the showerheads, or the faucet generators?
Yes, yes.
We will have the showerheads. We actually received them just today, actually.
Oh, excellent, okay.
So we'll have plenty for the, both the open house meeting and the public meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
And in addition to the, the logo and marketing materials, there's also going to be an advertising campaign targeting not only the local residents, but the visitors coming to the island, through newspaper ads, internet posts, cable television. We're looking at all those different media outlets.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
KISL radio? Grab this stuff, okay?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, here we go. We shall now go to the consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, you have eight items on your consent calendar this evening. I'd like the Mayor Pro Tem to note that there are three sets of actions that are prepared for your review this evening. There are two sets of warrants. We have a resolution for an interim budget while we prepare for you next year's budget so that we can continue our expenditures. The request to renew a contract with Hovetic Consulting for building official services. A resolution to signify the city's intent to include a cost of living adjustment for represented employees in the fiscal year 1415 budget. An ordinance adding emergency shelters. And a request for an authorization for professional services for, related to the MS4 permit. All under the consent calendar this evening. under the consent calendar this evening.
Counsel?
Can I pull number six? Please?
That's the cost of living, the COLA. I would like to pull item five.
Five?
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to pull him, Ben, but I just want to make sure I'm still going to receive answers on the warrants list.
Yes, I feel to bring you back a couple that I owed you?
It's okay, I just...
You'll get them.
I just want to, I don't want to pull it, I just, okay, thanks.
Is it possible to just ask a question without pulling something?
Yeah, of course.
Well, that's better.
Yeah, of course.
Amanda, I have a question on number seven, on item seven, on the shelters. So when it talks about the commercial and special commercial, and, you know, they can't, if I'm understanding, they can't be within residential areas, but they can be within in that, is that like a county-wide thing?
No, that's our choice. The housing element, or what we said we would do, is we would select areas that we felt were appropriate to allow emergency shelters to be established. I think it's up to us to choose which zones we feel are most appropriate for that type of use.
So when you talk about, so for example, we could put a shelter where Vons is?
Yes, it's in the commercial zone.
Okay, and what, so what would be, and I'm just being kind of facetious that we would put a shelter there, so Vons, but, but we've kind of, was it kind of intentional, they're not really within residential areas?
I think that the intent was to keep them in the, more in the downtown area, and commercial is, of course, the most central area, and special commercial allows for a variety of uses, and so I think that was just the direction that we went.
And what state law provides is that we are required to designate areas where they are entitled to build these structures as a matter of law, without notifying the public, without having any hearings. So we chose these areas that you can go, you can walk into the city, you can get a permit, and the public won't know. And the state says you're required to do that. If you wanted to allow these in other areas, we could go through a CUP process, but the state of California dictates that you have to have some areas where these are permitted as a matter of right, which means you go to the counter...
Right, I see.
You give them the application, and they give you your permit.
So they don't have to do a site plan application?
No.
No, they gotta do a site plan.
If it's a new building, yes. If it's a new building, yes.
All that required, it just doesn't need a public hearing.
But if you wanted to convert an existing structure, you would not need...
Correct. If you wanted to have this use in a structure that already exists.
Right.
Okay, great, okay.
All right, thank you. I can ask my question quick, and not pull item six, if you want.
Six, include six?
Yeah. Or do you, if there's further discussion, my only question was this, does this include management?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not.
Can you, Ben, can you explain a little bit to, about it, to the...
Sure, you want to just pull, you want to just pull number six?
I want to pull six, you want to pull six, explanation to everybody?
So I'm showing...
So we can be clear?
Absolutely. Five, six, and seven on the consent calendar, is that correct?
No, seven's done.
Seven's good.
Oh, no, no.
Six, seven, eight. Eight's done.
We're pulling five and six.
Five and six.
You're pulling six.
Okay, so let's start.
Would the public like to comment? Any comments from the public, right now? No, okay, thank you, go ahead, Amanda.
Okay, sorry. So for item number five, I'd like to call Amanda back to the podium. This is the proposed renewal of a contract with Hovetic Consulting, this is for our building official, Brian Zuffinger. So Amanda, maybe you can just give a brief overview as to where we are, and then council can pose their questions.
Okay, well, as you know, Brian's been with us now, I think this is his fifth year to provide our building official services, and his contract expired, so we are just bringing it in for renewal. Brian has not requested an increase in his fees in the years that he'd been here to date, so we have requested an increase in his hourly rate. He's changing the boat that he travels on, so we're actually going to be getting expanded hours from him on the days that he's here, and I guess that's...
And he's here three days a week?
He's here, current schedule is Tuesday, Wednesday, Fridays. And then he's available by phone on any other days that we need him. Any other questions?
No, not necessarily, you, thank you, Amanda.
I'm going to ask the obvious question. If we're going from the Newport boat to the 615 boat, that means we get three hours more?
Right.
And do we need the three hours more?
Yes.
Okay.
There's, Brian's really involved, not only does he do all of our normal construction inspections and enforcement of construction, but he's also involved in the sewer lateral program, the fog program, and other public works projects that he provides support to as the code, building code expert on staff.
Just want to make sure we're spinning one in the right way.
We'll keep him busy.
I'm just looking at that increase.
Well, and then, and then I know that, do you want to speak to this first?
Well, I, I would, my request was going to be, I'd like to pull this item, table it to the next meeting, I'd like to get some comps, and I would like to propose a meeting with possibly Amanda, Ben, myself, and Annie, I'd like to ask if you would be present as well, and, and just talk a little bit more about this, if, so that's my request, is if we could table this to the next meeting.
And go out and get...
No, just to have a conversation.
Oh, you said comps, and so I...
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to see a little more analysis on...
We could certainly bring comps to that discussion, we could do that.
Right.
If you give us, you know, about a week, I think that we could have some.
We're cashing out.
Yep, we could do that.
And I think part of our question also, and may, is in the discussion, is, is that even enough time? Do we need full time, and that, so I think all of that's going to be in the discussion, and, and...
Right.
So, yeah, and we definitely want Brian in on that, because he knows what's going on, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to pull that item, then?
Yeah.
Is that the motion?
I'd make a motion to hold this item over to the next meeting, and with that, a request of approval from the rest of the council to allow for Annie and I to have that meeting, and I don't know if we need that, but...
Second.
Any discussion?
Public.
From the audience? Let's call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, that puts us to item number six, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, so this item is a resolution that's brought to you for consideration. This city council has signified its intent to provide cost of living adjustments to the represented employees as part of the next budget, and so I prepared this for you this evening, because I wanted the city employees, the community, to be aware that this is something that we're planning on doing, because, as you know, we were in our goal-setting session before this meeting, we may not adopt the budget for a couple months yet, and I just want everyone to know, this is something that we're planning on doing. The proposal is for a 2% cost of living adjustment for all three bargaining groups. Please note that we are actually going to provide 4% to the AMEA, that's the proposal, because the AMEA is going to be paying 2% more of their retirement, the employee contribution pursuant to state law, so the net increase to them would still be 2%, just like the harbor and the fire employees. So that's, they're miscellaneous employees, they're not safety employees, it's a little bit complicated, but that's the, the way that we're having to do that. This would be retroactive to July 1, the start of the fiscal year. The anticipated impact fiscal is about $150,000. All employee associations are aware that this is on tonight's agenda. Negotiations for the MOUs are ongoing, this does not cease or disrupt that process, this just simply is a symbolic demonstration of your intent, if you decide to adopt this, to include a COLA in the budget.
So they could, they could still go and negotiate?
It's our plan.
Other stuff that they need, or whatever else, this doesn't mean that this is dead in order?
No, I have asked all three associations to please schedule meetings with me for, actually, for any time after tomorrow, so we can get that back on track. The cost of living adjustments were the co-centric circle, if you will, between all three groups. They have different things that they're interested in, because of their different membership, but they all were united in wanting a modest COLA. It's been a number of years since one has been provided to the employees, and I think it's the right thing to do, in my opinion.
Well, and let me, let me ask you a question. In the negotiations and things, has there been any shift in medical, in their medical costs or anything, or is that stuff that was negotiated on the table?
It's something that we're, that's part of the ongoing negotiations.
Okay.
It's, nothing's been decided, there have been proposals made, but there's no finalization on that, yet.
Is there a place to ask that kind of question in this meeting?
You can certainly ask that.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if that was something...
Just giving you a vague answer, because it's something being negotiated, we don't have a...
Right, okay.
Don't give away all the strategies.
I'm not sure how I missed this, but maybe I just didn't understand it all the way. So the AMEA is, is going to be required to put an additional 1.9% into their own retirement?
Mm-hmm.
So we're looking at giving them a 4% CPI, because they get to put an extra 1.9% into their retirement?
Well, and, and the reason for that being, I think it's a pretty hollow cost of living adjustment, if you, if you give that, and then they don't realize it at all. That's why I'm recommending 4%, because if you provided the AMEA employees with a straight 2% adjustment, the result in their paycheck would be nothing.
But that's a result that's going into their retirement, though.
Well, it's not, they're, they're not increasing the amount of their retirement, it's just their contribution is increasing, if that makes sense. It's not, it's not that their retirement is gaining more, or at a rapid, more rapid rate, or there's been, being a bigger amount put in there, they're just paying more into it. And so if you gave them a 2% adjustment, and this, and this retirement law change goes into effect, you're not giving them a cost of living adjustment, because they are realizing zero.
They're buying down some of the unfunded stuff that floats out there.
They are, they are.
And then the other, the other unions or whatever?
Fire and the harbor?
They don't pay anything?
Well, they, they currently contribute the employee portion of their retirement. Safety and miscellaneous employees have different retirement formulas and systems, the, the basic premise is, if you're a safety employee, your career is possibly a bit shorter, you're exposed to greater danger, and so you can retire earlier, and so your, your amounts, your contribution amounts are higher, for that reason.
With the pleasure? Comments from the public?
Move staff on one to four, six through eight.
Second.
We'll reply.
Move to second? Okay, call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, moving into general business, we have three items this evening. The first item is a request of the council for a letter of support for Avalon Freight Services in their California Public Utility Commission application. I know that both Greg Bombard from Catalina Express, as well as Doug Houghton from Harley Marine Services are both in the audience this evening. This request was, was brought to me, and I advised Mr. Bombard that I would certainly forward it to you for your consideration. As you know, as part of the island company's process to determine the freight provider, Avalon Freight Services was ultimately selected. As part of that selection, they're required to file with the CPUC to assist with their effort, they're asking the city to provide a letter of support. I know that Mr. Bombard has indicated that he'd be happy to come back and provide a review and concept of what he is wanting to provide, if that's the pleasure of the council. I know that they're both here this evening to answer any questions, they both made a trip over here just to be present for this particular item.
Appreciate that. Did anybody have any questions? I guess I, I was hoping that, you can come up to the mic, both of you, thank you. Prior to considering sending a letter to the CUP, it just seems to make sense that we would want to know what you're submitting to the PUC in the best interest of the citizens of Avalon, so if there's a way we can, I don't know about, I don't know what a CUP application looks like, but, or your presentation, or just something for us would be nice.
Yeah, well, the RFP stood in for the fact that we needed to adopt the rates that were there today. So our application is merely to move forward and to become available for the operation of freight between San Pedro and Catalina Island, that's what we'll be seeking. And a letter of support only allows the PUC to understand that the city is behind this move, and as far as adopting rates and all of those go along, all of that will come along as the application is read with the ALJ.
And also, the city was part of the process of making the determination of the final option.
Yeah. I understand they were, and that's something that, that I, I would, I would just like a little time, if you don't mind, Greg, just to look at whether, look at your presentation, and I'm, I don't know, I think Ole was in on that, and I don't know if you kept that information to share with us, but just to see...
We can certainly get you a copy of the proposal.
Okay.
Of our proposal to the...
Because, because you are proposing now that the citizens of Avalon will have to go to San Pedro to drop off their freight?
Actually, what it, what it's worked out, and we're right in the middle of our EIR on the final ER, and what does it mean, what has it done, as far as being able to get to the freight services, and we believe at this point, it's going to come out as a negative deck, because what they're seeing is, most of the freight is brought down either the 710 or the, or the 110 freeway, and what we're doing is cutting out the time that it takes to get to that location. As far as being able to get into our San Pedro location, it's right off the freeway, so the availability to the services will be, we believe, much better than driving down through Wilmington to find Avalon Boulevard, to get to the foot of Avalon Boulevard.
However, what, do you know, have a, an idea of what percentage of people in Avalon go to Long Beach versus take the boat to San Pedro?
Well, today, approximately 58% of our people operate out of Long Beach, and that's because we carry our winter schedule there, and we will continue to do that, as long as Mother Nature lets us, and what I mean by that is, it's a, it's a harbor that needs dredging periodically, we're up against that again. So what San Pedro does for us is gives us a stable location to operate, not only passengers if we need to on a year-round basis, but also the freight. Don't get me wrong, we need both locations to operate year-round, in order to move the amount of people we move, and park the amount of cars we do.
Right.
Parking is a major part of it.
And the 58%, what was that a number of?
Of the total amount of people that we move on an annual basis are out of Long Beach.
And the other 42 come out of San Pedro?
Between Dana Point and San Pedro.
So I guess my question is, how many Avalon residents with commuter cards go to Long Beach versus San Pedro?
Most of them, most of them have their car parked in that garage.
In Long Beach?
Yes.
Yes, I guess that's a concern of mine.
But I still believe they'll find it easier to drop into San Pedro off the 110, and then come across the bridges, than to go down through C Street and B Street and the rest of it, to try to get to where Wilmington was. And, and the other thing that you should know is that the long-range plan for that facility in Wilmington was that it, oh, it has to be moved, because it's...
Yes, I, yes, I...
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
A big park or something, right?
Well, there is a park going into there, it's a waterfront.
Yeah, right.
Revitalization.
Right, okay, okay. Well, I don't know what your pleasure is, I would prefer to pull it and read a little more, and see...
When is your application due?
We're going to put it in, in this next week, so what we were doing was seeking the letters of support, they just help the process move along, and the PUC will take almost a year... They just help the process move along, and the PUC will take almost a year providing, depending on how that plays out, but they'll take as much of it as a year to get their final decision out, so. They never move real quick, but it's something that we know we've got to get in and get moving on, and so we're, we're just seeking our letters of support so that it may move along more swiftly.
And, and really, what's the, what, what's the damage of not having this letter as part of your application? Or, it, that's not the right way to say it, but I understand that the letter would help you, knowing that you have the local municipality behind you, but what is the repercussions of not having that?
Well, probably they'll ask us the questions. As they move along, the ALJ will come back to our attorney and ask the questions that he needs answers to. Where does the community stand on this? And through the process, I think we answered all of those, so what is needed here is the proposal that we came forward with and why we were awarded, and I'm more than happy to try to supply that to you.
And my next question is for Ole. I just learned this afternoon, late this afternoon, that the, the city did have some participation in this. Can you help me understand what that participation was and at what level?
There were three finalists, Curtin, Catalina Freight, and Mr. Bombard. I got to sit on one of the interviews, Bob sat in on the other two interviews, and then we provided some feedback back to the island company, and the island company made the ultimate decision, because basically what the island company was doing was awarding the lease on the freight facility at Wibley Beach.
Right.
I mean, that's, was their involvement. And both Mr. Bombard and Mr. Curtin decided to come up with a different location for their freight from Wilmington. And I think Mr. Coffey, they, the ports provided Catalina Freight a new location further down the street. So it was basically talking about the lease on the, in Avalon and where the facility. Nutshell.
Oh, that's correct.
I mean, I think the key thing was all three of the people were saying they were going to keep the rates the same for the next five years?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, for the next five years, so that we see no change in what we pay for the next five years. The difference would be, instead of going to Catalina Freight Wilmington, you go to San Pedro and drop your stuff off.
That is, that's correct.
Well, then, one other question, okay, if we hold off a month in, in putting in the letter, that is going to be sitting up, your app's going to be sitting up there anyway, correct? So a month wouldn't really hurt anything?
No, I mean, we, at the end of the day, it'll just help the ALJ move the thing along. It'll be assigned to an ALJ fairly quickly, as soon as it hits the calendar.
Okay. With the pleasure. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with the letter of support today.
Yeah, I think that, there's no doubt that most of the people in Avalon would be behind this, but I think we need to give them some, some kind of a presentation on paper to just confirm what you're saying in, in a letter of, of promise to, to the people and what they're going to be getting out of this, and, but there's no doubt that, in my mind, that your service to the island has been outstanding, so I'm sure you'll just carry that on from this point on, but we have a responsibility to our constituents just to come up with the paperwork that we need to prove to them that this is the right thing to do. So I think holding off is something that I could go along with, with Annie, until we get some kind of a presentation from you.
Well, we'll, we wanted to come back and do a presentation on exactly what the new equipment's going to look like, the locations, and as I said, we would love to have done that tonight, but we were here just prior to the EIR being finalized. Once that's finalized, that allows us to know that we can move forward on exactly where the warehouse will be, the docking facilities and those. And we're right there, we're, we're just about finished, so. What we're trying to do is get this application in and get moving. There'll be a lot of time to talk about it and come in and do a nice presentation so that everybody within the community can see what we're doing, where, how we're moving forward. I can assure you that it'll be easier, and we feel that what we're bringing to the table will be as good, or we feel much better than what we've seen in the past. But again, that's us, and that's the way we feel, and we will be, you know, bringing new equipment and those kinds of things. But what, the other thing I want to make sure of, is that we clear up, is we're not looking to move everybody to San Pedro. I want to make sure everybody understands that, within the community also, that Long Beach will always be there as long as Mother Nature allows us to keep it there in that location. And it's been quite a fight to get these dredging dollars. Again, Alan Molenthal, as well as Janice Hahn, helped us quite a bit this last round in getting those dollars. So we will be doing some dredging this winter. We may see an interruption in service to Long Beach. We hope not, we're trying to work around it, so we'll see, but I'll certainly let people know if we are going to see an interruption. But at this point, we hope to do a workaround. But again, we need both of these facilities, and we do believe that San Pedro, well, it's the only one that we have the faith in that we could operate the freight service from at the location we have that will suit much better than what's there today.
Great, thank you.
Would that be appropriate, maybe, to put it on the next month's agenda, on the 5th? Would that be okay with you guys?
What I'd like to do is make sure that we get through the EIR process, and we're doing that with the Port of LA.
Okay.
And as soon as we get that done, I'd like to notify the city manager and then establish a good time for us to be able to make that presentation, so that we can then sit and explain to the community exactly what we have going forward.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Could we get a copy of the proposal, if I can't find mine?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. And the questions, I'm sorry? Audience questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item number 10. Okay, so was, was there a motion then to, just to make sure I'm clear, so we're, we're moving this to the next meeting?
No.
No, he'll call you in.
Okay, so we don't need to take any...
No.
Okay, very good, very good. I'm going to kick this next one to the city attorney, number 10. This is the Avalon City Council Policies Manual. This is your final chapter pertaining to training, education, and conferences. I should tell you that we are going to be bringing back a complete, you're going to have to see this one more time, but you're going to get a complete book at the next meeting. And the reason why we're doing that is we want to go back through one more time at the staff level, just to make sure that we caught comments, the questions, the concerns, tighten all up so that what you have reflects what you asked us to do. So this is just the final chapter. If we, we want you to have this policy manual right here at the dais, so that you can refer to it as you need it. It's a reference tool, it's a living document, we can certainly revise it as you guys see fit. So Scott, would you mind just giving a brief overview as to what's going forward tonight?
Yeah, this is probably one of the simplest chapters, and the purpose of this chapter is to encourage the city council to seek training and educational and conference opportunities. I think that in my two decades of being city attorney and various things, that you get a lot when you go to conferences or educational sessions, so we want you to do that. That's the first policy. The second policy is obviously, we want to be cost-conscious, and so this policy encourages you to take advantage of the lodgings and opportunities and, and rates offered by those conferences. And basically, what, what we're really saying is, when you, when you get notice that there's a conference, look at it as quickly as possible, see if you want to go to it, and if you do, sign up quickly, because if you don't, first of all, the rates go up as the closer you get, and, and second, like, like the League Conference, all the hotel rooms fill up, and then you have to go to a non-conference facility, and it's usually higher, we usually get special government rates. And so, again, the purpose of this policy is to encourage you to go to these conferences and educational seminars, but sign up early so that you can save the city some money. And then you are required, the, the last thing is, you are required under state law to, when you come back from a conference, this Mr. Olson will demonstrate that you give a little presentation about what you learned at the conference.
Can...
Yes.
Does this have to be written? It says in here, section 8.5.1, "Council members shall present a written report and make a verbal report during the next regular meeting of the council."
The written report is, it's been interpreted under state law, if you give the materials to the city, so the city has the materials or a copy of the materials.
Or a copy of the materials?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have to write a report every month when I go to a meeting?
No, no.
Okay.
If you want to, you can.
I don't need any more work.
We, we look forward to your report.
Yeah.
You can make a condition, you can go if you self-write a report.
Or you bring back a basket.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, the last item under general business this evening is a request from Catalina Island Resort Services to waive the permitted construction hours under the municipal code for the Descanso Beach Club project. I know that Mr. De Meyer is here this evening, oh, but, sorry, Amanda is...
I am going to recuse myself for financial reasons.
So Amanda, Amanda's going to come back to the podium, I'm sorry, jumped the gun on that one again.
And so is Paul.
And so is Paul. They can both come on up. Amanda's going to present a brief overview of the staff report, and again, Paul is here on behalf of the island company to answer any questions.
Okay, the island company, as you know, is very busily trying to get Descanso Beach Club opened up, and we had received some comments from our boating community that their working hours from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM was not a welcome change. So we advised the island company that they could come in and request a waiver from the construction hours. Under this Avalon Municipal Code, the construction hours are 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and they have submitted that request to ask for a waiver of the normal construction hours, and that we grant them more extended hours or earlier hours in order for them to continue with the construction out at Descanso Beach. And Paul is here representing the island company. So if you have any questions for me?
Probably, not probably, just of Paul.
Good evening. Paul De Meyer, 201B, Caydele Soul, here tonight on behalf of the island company, to ask for your permission to conduct interior building finish work at the Descanso Beach Club, starting at 6:00 AM, midweek only, Tuesday through Friday, four days a week, not five. And under this proposal, all exterior work will start at the normal time of 8:00 AM. An approval to start at 6:00 AM will help us and our contractor crews to complete the building sooner, thereby returning the property back to the attractive beachfront environment it's known for. We at the island company are now familiar with and respectful of the city's noise ordinance, Title V, Chapter 13, which says that unnecessary and excessive noises, which are offensive to the senses, are detrimental to the public interest, are public nuisances, and are prohibited. We're also familiar with the rules that pertain specifically to construction activities, that's Section 5, 13.05, that make it unlawful to operate equipment or perform any outside construction or repair work, or to operate any pile driver, power shovel, pneumatic hammer, power hoist, or any other construction-type device, or to permit such construction operations prior to 8:00 AM and after 7:00 PM. These latter conditions come into effect if the project or activity is within 500 feet of any residential zone, hotel, or motel. And I'd like to call your attention to the fact that the Descanso Beach Club is not within 500 feet of any such areas. We are aware that visitors on boats moored in front of Descanso Beach could potentially be impacted, but to date, we are not aware of any violations or complaints of disturbing the peace and quiet by loud or unreasonable noise per Title V, Section 13, Section, Chapter 13, Section 5, 13.07.1. We'd like to distinguish this proposed construction activity from other sounds produced by the ongoing Descanso Beach operation. We understand that there are some concerns about the type and volume of music being played for Descanso Beach guests, but think these can and should be addressed separately as they do not relate to this request to start inside construction work at 6:00 AM. We believe that the noise levels generated from construction inside the building would be muffled to a point of not impacting the boating community or anyone else, and therefore would not be considered excessive or unreasonable in any way. Please consider the following facts, which have been provided by my project management team at the island company. As of now, all the windows, first-floor windows and doors have been installed. The walls have an R19 BAT, B-A-T-T, insulation rating, creating a sound transmission class rating of 45 out of 65, essentially at the upper end of the range. The ceiling and floor assembly is designed for a sound transmission class rating of 50 out of 65. Thereby, the construction activities proposed would be conducted with an enclosed insulated building. So as mentioned earlier, your approval for us to start work at 6:00 AM would help us complete the building sooner and return the property sooner to the environment, attractive environment it's known for. We are respectfully seeking your, the council's affirmation that this proposed inside construction activity can be conducted as requested. Thank you for your times, and I'm available for questions if you have.
Sure we do. Anybody want to start? Questions, anyone? So they will, so the doors are on upstairs?
Not upstairs yet, downstairs.
The downs, and the windows are downstairs, and the doors are downstairs, and so these guys will be working in a closed room?
Correct.
They won't open the doors?
Correct.
Well, they're going to have to open the door?
Yes.
To go in and out and get, okay. When we talk about noise, are there DB levels that can be monitored? What is noise?
We, we have a noise meter, we could monitor it. It, it's a bit difficult to enforce, it would require, obviously, sending somebody over there.
And who do we have on staff between 6:00, 8:00?
Code enforcement.
We have code for, so five.
That's when they're heading out?
Depends, they've got a, a schedule that is now going to start varying quite a bit, so they are, not necessarily every single day, but they, they are available. And we do have a noise meter, as you know.
And all, if I may ask, the people that are doing the work, are they all mainland people, pretty much?
I'm guessing the answer is yes, I don't have an, an accurate...
Okay, so they're, so they're basically, these folks are probably coming in on Monday morning at 6:15 and working through Friday?
My understanding is they do come in on Monday, but we wouldn't start work at 6:00 on Monday because they don't arrive until, until about 7:30, 8:00. And they would leave on Friday afternoon, so it's Tuesday through Friday that would be impacted.
Go ahead.
I, I just don't feel that moving, doing permitting to somebody get a job done like that, I mean, it's, we're just opening a can of worms, we're just going to, other people start wanting to get special provisions for construction, be it residential or commercial. I think, in my opinion, doing this, we're just going to open a big can of worms, I think we ought to just stick to our guns, and we have this in here for a reason. And I don't want to see us open a can of worms where everybody's going to go out, and my house is special, I need to have a special permit. Every job's important to you, commercial and residence. I just don't want to see us open a can of worms for this to get out. And that would, that's my opinion on it.
I have a question. How, if you could start this tomorrow, how, how much sooner would you complete the project based on these projections, on these two hours?
Our intent is to complete the project, I think, by the end of September, so it could possibly add, you know, I don't have a real answer to that, it might add a couple of weeks timeframe to get it completed. As we know, things seem to take longer than we projected, and when we give you a... And when we give you a deadline date, it never seems to happen. So it always gets extended, and we'd like to try to prevent that.
And Amanda, did you say there had been a complaint from voters, or not?
Was it related to construction?
The harbor master is here if you want to ask him to come forward.
I'm sorry?
The harbor master is here if you'd want him to come forward.
Sure. Yeah, I saw his little note, but you want... Come on, Brian.
The only noise complaints that we had received was the music that the speakers pointed out to see, and one of the mooring owners and one other guest on the boats.
The goodwill that the island company has projected towards the people of Avalon and some of the other construction projects has been generally nonexistent. Dust suppression, noise, starting too early, working on Sundays. These are all complaints, using excess fresh water when they're not supposed to. Just basic flagrant violations of our city codes that everybody in the island company office should be up to knowing exactly what's going on. Basically, not cleaning up after your projects. You know, having to send code enforcement out, blocking driveways. You know, if we had some goodwill to go on here... Not that the island company doesn't help the community. You guys participate, and we really appreciate everything that the island company does for the community. But if you guys are gonna finish the project in September, what's the difference between September, October, November? We have no... You know, I understand that you have people coming from the mainland, but I just think that we've been shunned as a community, kind of stepped on a little bit as a city. And the goodwill that's been shown to us so far has been nonexistent. It's gonna be hard for me to support this.
Being a silent person in the forest... It's... I think when Paul started, he talked about what the noise ordinance was designed to prevent is people in hotels and resident units being imposed upon by construction leases. And we have an email from the harbor master saying he doesn't think that the boats will be affected by it. And I know why that they want to get done by the end of September, because they got two weeks in October for Jazz Trax, and that's a venue that they use very heavily for Jazz Trax after the casino event. And I don't see where the impact of the people being affected by their interior construction between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., so I would support it.
And I'd just like to reiterate the part of the ordinance that says that the rules are in place for projects or activities that are within 500 feet of a residential zone or a hotel or motel, neither of which we are involved in.
But do we have something on the books that say we can be as loud as we want, places where there aren't people within 500 feet? I mean, there's not like a free-for-all, like if we start building in the canyon, well, we're not 500 feet, so we can go as long as we want.
It is cited in the municipal code that... And it's also in the staff report that there is a general, "You shall not make unreasonable noise." And our also interpretation is that because we consider the harbor the largest hotel in Avalon, that that would apply. 500 feet would apply.
I'm just looking at you thinking. I don't have a question. Comments from the audience? Now you're gonna do it all at once. Well, what's the pleasure of the council?
I just don't think it's the best interest of the city to start changing ordinances all of a sudden. They're there for a reason. Obviously, we start changing them. Who knows who's gonna come up and want something else done? Again, it's a big can of worms, and right now, I couldn't vote for that.
And if it's 2-2, it dies as well?
Correct. Has to be three votes.
Could I try this, Councilman Hernandez? Could I say we're not trying to change the ordinance or even waive it? We're really trying to ask for some permission to do something what we believe would be reasonable and not unnecessary or excessive noise, because we're not within the 500-foot zone, so we're not asking for any of that to be changed. It's just what kind of noise is too much noise? We would be happy to have a decibel meter or a meter out there, or if somebody complains about that activity... And I'm differentiating the inside construction activity from anything that's occurring outside. So all the outside activity would occur after 8:00 a.m. and only inside, finishing work, drywall, things like that, to the extent possible. And our letter also says that if we do fail in that, that we would be willing to cease or go back to the original 8:00 o'clock start time.
What percentage of that project is done?
I'm gonna say 80% plus, but I honestly don't know.
I mean, I guess to give you this waiver, or whatever we wanna call it, and then... And you made a good point. It's probably to try to get up for Jazz Trax because you usually have events out there. But so you bust your butt for this amount of time, and it still doesn't happen because of Catalina factor, or the health department doesn't come over to get you signed off on kitchens, which we know they're not always very punctual. I would hate to create a waiver and then go, "Well, we really tried to get it done, but really couldn't, so... But oh, what the heck." I mean, and I kind of agree with Rich is that... I mean, yes, you are out there by yourself. You're kind of... You're definitely unique in that regard, but... I don't know. I guess we should just put it to a vote.
Well, I tell you what. They have to sleep somewhere, and they're gonna be sleeping here in town. The employees, they're gonna be waking up, making a bunch of noise, probably disturb some people in town, just with the racket going on from everybody getting their tools, going to work. I still think there's gonna be a bit of a nuisance here in Avalon because of this ordinance you're proposing here, so let's just vote on it.
Need a motion first. That's... I move to approve the waiver.
Is there a second?
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Sorry for that, but thank you for your consideration anyways. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Now I believe we have somebody from the hospital.
Oh, we're gonna finish the council meeting, and then we have, because we have a closed session, we'll go right to the beginning of the hospital meeting, do that. So we end with the closed session at the hospital. I think you're thinking of the housing authority. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm excuse me, housing authority. I got my agents confused.
Wait, we didn't have the announcement. We're having three minutes tonight. And we're not getting paid.
We don't have to have that anymore.
Well, we don't?
No.
Darn.
Okay, so we doing a journalist. We just keep this one open while we go to the hospital. To these, right?
Yeah.
Okay. City manager report.
I have none.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Are you gonna...
Well, I would just note that, and because that did involve the island company and Councilmember Cassidy abstained, I should've had Councilmember Hernandez abstain. You could get income from the island company. It still would require then two votes to pass, and there were no... There was not two votes to pass. Right? So...
I don't believe Councilmember... Can I speak?
Well, it's a matter of if he gets $500 from the island company, you have an automatic confirmation interest, period.
Okay. City manager report.
No report, thank you.
City attorney have something you need to share?
Yeah, let me get my notes here. Okay, in conjunction with the council's directions at the last meeting on water, wanted to bring you up to date on four things that BBK is pursuing. Some of you may know that we were founded as a water law firm. We have 20 lawyers that just practice water. So one of the things that we're doing is we are working with staff, and by the end of this week, we will be presenting a letter to Senators Boxer and Feinstein. There's some new legislation that creates some funding opportunities for infrastructure, both in terms of water resources, creating water, and also infrastructure for our sewer and saltwater systems. So once those letters are delivered, we're gonna be setting up meetings. We have some lobbyists in Washington, and we'll be hand-delivering those letters as well. The process in Washington is you mail them, and then you hand-deliver them into the office. And we've already talked to Feinstein and Boxer's office. There's a bill out there right now that Barbara Boxer is gonna be in charge of all funding for California for infrastructure. And so it's important to meet with her, and so we're establishing that. The second thing is, through conversations that we've had with the state Department of Water Resources, we have been able to secure a desalinization demonstration project for the week... For next week, it's gonna be a one-day project. It's a portable desol unit. What they're gonna do is they're gonna hook it up to... The plan is they're gonna hook it up to a fire hydrant and use saltwater from the fire hydrant, and then they're gonna put it through their machine, and then they're gonna be able to give anyone in the city that wants to come and fill up jugs, try drinking water, it's gonna be there. It'll be a one-day demonstration project. And so it's... And then these units are being sold and marketed to small communities with water issues. But we wanted to... They're going around to areas like Avalon to demonstrate it. So we're gonna see if it works in Avalon, and then we'll be able to hopefully work with the state to get some funding for these units to expand desalinization.
Where's the brine going?
The brine is so small that it actually... They're gonna take it out with them. For this project right here, we're gonna add the brine to the sewer plant. We've talked with the environs, and the amount of brine that will be created through this demonstration project does not raise any concerns for the city.
When is this?
I think it's the 23rd by...
We'll provide the date. End of July, this is looking at.
Yeah, yeah. We're still finalizing the dates.
Do you know the name of the company that's...
Yes, Pure Water. Called Pure Water.
Pure Saltwater.
And again, we also, along with that, as you know, Santa Barbara had a desalinization plant. They decommissioned it. And Santa Barbara last week hired us to recommission that project. So we're working on the desol plant for Santa Barbara. We also had our water attorneys look, research the concept of putting recycled water into our saltwater lines. One of the biggest costs of reclamation is the fact that you have to have a separate water system to deliver it. It's commonly called purple pipes. And so we have done some preliminary research and had some preliminary discussions with the state water board about if we were able to develop enough water for reclaimed, could we put it into our existing saltwater lines, because they're separate? And the indications are that yes, we could. We have to go through some permit process. So again, if there's enough, and then you find a way to get it to where the saltwater input, we are encouraged that we could use the existing saltwater lines for the reclaimed water. And lastly, yesterday, or the day before, the state of California issued some emergency regulations for water that apply across the board. It's a state program. It applies to Avalon. We anticipate that they will go into effect in two or three days from now, because there's a 10-day period, which expires on the 18th. And those regulations limit outdoor landscaping to two days per week, period. So even though we're not in Phase 2, if these issues... If these emergency orders are issued later this week, people will only be able to irrigate twice a week, and that's throughout the state.
And then we police that as a city? Who's the police for that?
Well, that's the one thing that the legislation... It's funny, they issued these rules, and I read the whole entire rule, and they didn't say who regulates it. And so we've sent a letter to them to clarify that. It's, you know, the majority of the time, it's the water company or the entity that delivers the water. The regulations are silent as to can a public entity that has a private water company enforce the state rules? We can definitely enforce ours, but ours don't... You know, but the question is, can we enforce the state rules? The state does have some water. They call them water cops. I don't think they'll be coming to Avalon, but it's a possibility, but we are looking into that. But again, assuming those rules go into effect, it's two days per week, period.
Who keeps track of what days you water on?
Well, depending on the community, some communities have meters that are 24-hour meters that are on all the time. Lake Arrowhead has those. So we can go to every house, and we can see how much water you're using every second of the day.
But we don't have that here.
You don't have that here, so they would be citizens or code enforcement, self-enforced.
Councilmember reports?
I would like to say one. I just wanted kudos to all the harbor guys when we had that surge last week, especially the guys at the warehouse coming out and on their own time, or not on their own time, on the city time, I guess. And they got ahold of them, but they all came down and did a great job. The surge was real bad in the harbor that day. And I just wanted to thank them and let them know that they did a great job and continue to keep doing the good work that they do. Thanks, harbor guys.
Cindy?
I wanted to ask if we could, Scott and Ben, if we could please revise our code and planning to provide for an alternate planning commissioner?
The answer to that is you legally can do that. City of Davis, which is one of our clients, has that, because they do have some absences up there. So if council directs, I can provide that, Davis's municipal code, to Amanda, and we can have that on the next... Well, probably have to go to planning commission first because it's in the zoning code, and then they're gonna bring it back. But you can legally create an alternative planning commissioner or commissioners.
That was on my list, too, so that's good. I don't know if you need all five of us, but we got two of us.
That's it. I think we have another council meeting in the interim, but just in case I forget, I will be attending the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting on August 6th, and I will be taking prior councilman Michael Ponce with me to do an official handover.
Joe?
Yes. I had some people from the parade saying that they wanted me to give some recognition to the recreation department on what an outstanding idea it was. And Jen, in particular, great idea about bringing up our World War II veterans. It was one of the most glorious days that I've seen patriotic-wise in decades on Catalina. And I just wanna say, some of the families that were coming up, and they were just in tears about how much praise that they should give you, so hugs to you from all the families of the people that these veterans belong to, and how gracious they are, and how gracious we are, just as Americans, to be able to celebrate our World War II veterans, and all our veterans for that matter. And thank you very much. Keep those good ideas coming, Jen.
Yeah, on that same line, Joe, Roger Upton stopped me and wanted to thank everybody again for the plaque and everything. He was sick that day, couldn't make it, and he was very sorry he couldn't make it, but he told me to tell everyone on the council and everybody who was involved, "Thank you very much," from the bottom of his heart. So Roger Upton has been passed on.
We thank you, Roger. Thank you.
As previously alluded to, I attended the...
As previously alluded to, I attended the Independent Cities Association meeting in San Diego. There were eight seminars plus two lunches. I only made it to seven of the eight. The one I missed was human trafficking, which, some of the high points were updates on marijuana legislation and e-cigarettes. But more importantly, they were talking about hydrogen fuel cells, county-wide solid waste conversion from utilizing the methane that comes out of the solid waste, methane coming out of sewer plants, which is kind of a natural, natural gas, I guess you'd call it there. There was one about, you would get that.
Talking to your mind.
I'm sorry, there was one about.
No, Roger didn't.
There was one about security of our city systems, of our information systems. And the one question we have to ask is, when was the last time we had a security assessment of your systems here?
The IT systems?
Yes.
Gina would probably be better able to answer that. Was that part of our IT assessment that we just completed Phase One or is that part of Phase Two, security?
Security is the beginning portion of Phase One.
Okay, so we've done, we've done some.
Oh, yes, okay.
Why don't you come to the microphone, Gina, real quick? Don't mind, sorry, put you on the spot. Gina works with Pat on our IT assessment, so.
Yes, if we go back in time to where we were about a year ago, we had no security. So, at this point, we have the virus control and all of that and also backup of all of our data on the pier as well as here. So, there's duplicate backup. What we're currently going to do for not too much is to have that backed up on the mainland. So, that's the ultimate for backup on security. Was there any other details on that?
Just that we regularly do some security assessments to make sure that we're on top of it and also that someone occasionally looks at the log files. I didn't know there were log files, but I guess that could be an indication of someone trying to snoop where they shouldn't be snooping. So, that's it for the IT stuff?
Yes, and that's an internal control that we have for finance, financial system software as well as the IT. And Pat Grady is, we're establishing kind of like a binder format so that when, as we move on in the project, if there's anybody that we get to be here on the mainland to assist us, those are the keys to everything. So, definitely secure.
So, I brought back some stuff for Ben.
His written report.
The written report.
Outstanding.
I just have one more request. The, could we move it higher up on the to-do list to place the water fountains that Rotary, the Rotary Club of Avalon had secured for the city?
Yes, we can. I think what I need to do in that is just obtain the scope of effort and cost involved. It may need to come back to you guys for approval, depending on how much that is, but yes.
The urgency with this is that the Rotary Club had obtained a grant to cover the costs of purchasing those. And in order for Rotary to participate in any other grant proposals through the foundation internationally, they have to complete what they've started. So, there's a timeframe in which this has to be completed. And there's also, you know, some funding issues associated with that. So, if it's possible, I know.
I'll work with the Public Works Director and the Harbor Master and we'll get the scope for what installation looks like. And depending on how much it is, we can either just proceed or we'll come back to you for approval.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Because there was not money in for installation? It was just for the purchase of the unit?
Right. And certainly can bring a conversation back to the Rotary Club as well. I just want to make sure that those fountains don't sit up at the warehouse much longer.
We will get a scope and we'll get to you guys.
Okay, thanks.
I just had a couple announcements. And I have mentioned it to you and I just wanted to see if the council is maybe in agreement in looking into this. Over in Long Beach, when you sweep the streets, there's the code enforcement guys right behind the vehicle. And so, you get your ticket post haste and then, or you don't get one because you're parked correctly. But what you can do after that is if 10 minutes later, the guy comes by, sweeps your street and then you have to go somewhere and you come back, you can now park on the other side of the street. And with our tightly impacted streets, it makes sense for us to be able to move back and not, because especially like downtown, you know, everybody works down there and parks on Clemente and all of those streets. It would be really nice if we could look at that option and maybe implement a program like that.
If I could, we've already taken the liberty to talk to our code enforcement guys about that. As Denise will tell you, there are some streets in town that that concept doesn't work, but there are some that we think that it may. So, we've gone to our code guys and we're trying to see what can be done and asking them to reach out to CRNR and coordinating with that. So, we're going to, it's our intent to give it a go.
I think that's the kind of things people want to know that we're working on, that, you know, fun things, little fun things that make like happy.
If I could add just one more thing, sorry. It was also our intent to come back to you after they've done some due diligence, just to say, just so people were aware and that they were knowing this was okay. We were going to probably write a little article, submit it to the paper, just so people knew. But we wanted them to do their homework so that we could make sure we covered everything first. So, we are, we are working on that. Probably the next meeting, we can come back and give that update.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, we don't really adjourn this one, right? Because we're going to move to the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees.
Yes.
Well, he's the chairman.
Good. Go while we go.
Call a meeting to order. And call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Annie.
No, no, that's okay.
Before you guys get into your closed session, Martin Curtin, I came here, I've been kind of following, I grew up here, following your guys' the community's water issues. I'm just here to offer myself and my company's insight into helping you guys look at some other options for potentially barging large-scale water into Avalon. It's obviously a more expensive thing than, you know, getting it from your aquifer. It's not a long-term solution. But as the naval installations at San Clemente and San Nicholas have both displayed, they don't have substantial aquifers, barging in is a more cost-effective method opposed to desalinization. San Nick's Air Force Base actually set their desal plant in and is now barging water in. So, I just wanted to take this time. I know the infrastructure here quite well. I know the community quite well. There's, there are some very implementable options for barging water in in a large scale in a very short period of time. So, it's, again, it's not nearly as, as cost-effective as pulling water out of the ground, but when it gets to a certain point, especially with the city attorney making mention, there very well could be some additional funds available to your city. So, that way, potentially, a lot of these businesses can continue to operate in the fashion that they need to. I don't know many businesses that operate on a 25% gross margin. So, if you start shutting down 25% of water to businesses, it's going to create a lot of havoc, which I'm sure a lot of people are very concerned about. So, if anyone has any specific questions or if anyone wants to reach out to myself or Curtin Maritime in the future, we just want to make ourselves available to the city, you know, just to help you guys try to get down this path the best you guys can.
With the concept that you briefly talked with me the other day, who do you think that you need to interface with to get your concept out there?
Potentially would be probably through the provider now, Southern California Edison, because ultimately, you know, anything is going to have to go into the main water system. Anything of any scale or anything other than a novelty fix has got to get integrated directly into the main system. And so, what we described to you the other day is ultimately a temporary mooring system established at the old mooring system that used to be providing fuel to Edison in that location, temporary HPDE pipe to the beach and pumping water in, you know, potable grade water in to the main system. The main system already exists at Pebley because they have a desal plant and they have tank farm there. So, ultimately, we can integrate directly into the system that is existing with tankage there. And again, it's not nearly as cheap as getting water out of the ground, but when you start looking at your other options, it becomes very, very expensive. When you start talking about barging water in in a break bulk situation, like in barrels or totes or anything like this, it just really becomes a novelty and not a fix in the sense that, you know, are we really going to go out to the, you know, to the outside and get a bucket of water and then take a shower with it? You know, I mean, if you, if you can integrate it into the main system, which we most definitely can, you actually create a solution that's viable. And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a huge demographic within LA County that can help bear the brine. You know, obviously, you know, our electricity rates are spread out over a group. So, so it's just an option for you guys to look into and, you know, we're offering our services, you know, just basically to help you guys even check the feasibility of it. Because ultimately, it's, you know, from where we stand, it's something that could be implemented in an extremely short amount of time. It's something that we do all stages of this. The temp mooring spread, the HPDE pipeline, the pumping systems, it's stuff that we do all the time. You know, so it's, it's not the exact same thing. You know, we put HPDE pipelines up to beaches for beach replenishment, but you're still pulling HPDE pipe from an offshore location to the beachhead. So, it's all very, very much in our wheelhouse.
May I address Mr. Curtin? Very significant facts that you're giving us right now, on point, something that we should take note of for sure because after talking, after listening to Mr. Stragi, considering shutting down certain areas of the town or certain percentages of our city, no, no way. We can't do that. We can't go in that direction. So, it's very appropriate that you've been here and you, and you made your presentation. Because right now, we're shipping down water to Emerald Bay and Holland's Landing, Cherry Cove, 4th of July. There's no water there. They pump those wells dry pretty much. We need to be barging water down to there immediately, right into their tanks, right into their system. We could use it here as well. How, how much water do you propose one barge can hold? How big do these, are these barges?
So, currently, in the short term, we could mobilize the 185-1 with a quarter million gallons. We could deliver that on a daily basis.
250,000 gallons?
And so, ultimately, and that's on the very small side. That same barge set up in a, in a full potable coated tanks, we're looking at 400,040 gallons in that barge. There's a really good chance that we could be in the million gallon range very easily by utilizing some other equipment that is currently being utilized on other contracts and then getting some, some really solid cross utilization because of the scheduling. So, I mean, these are large-scale fixes for the city. And, you know, like I said, I could mobilize stainless tanks on the -1 and get a quarter million gallons here like that. I can set my temp mooring system up and pull an HPDE pipeline into the beach, you know, in three working days. So, these are implemented solutions that just take dollars and take city support in the sense that, you know, when we go out to do these things, it's very different when you have a, you know, not necessarily a disaster, but, you know, the ball is really in the city's court as far as utilizing us. You know, we're here to provide whatever, whatever services you guys need. This is my hometown. This is a very special project to me. So, anything that you guys want, we're at your disposal.
What would it cost to ship in a half a million gallons? Let's say just a quarter of a million gallons of water. What would that cost us? Do you have any idea?
Yes, but it's, it really starts to become a question of utilization and overall gallons. Because you have all these initial startup costs of setting up your temp system, pulling your HPDE pipeline, you know, getting your barges set up. So, ultimately, it's an equanimity of scale in the sense that the more water you bring, the lower the price you get. And so, I don't really necessarily want to give you, you know, a price of saying, you know, it's, it's X thousands of dollars. Because ultimately, with not that much information, we can get really hard numbers. So, I would prefer not to shoot from the hip.
So, but I guess, this is only supposed to be a three-minute thing, but this is very interesting and I guess we can discuss this. Well, I guess I'm curious how we proceed because I guess I'm curious, at what point does Edison have to provide us the water and come up with these kinds of?
Several things. So, Martin and I have played phone tag the last couple of days. I will certainly reach out to him and we'll finish the discussion. But it definitely needs to involve Edison, especially if you're, if you're proposing to connect to their system. It's got to go through the water purveyor. And we can certainly say that we're interested in something like that. But, you know, a couple, you know, we will have that discussion. There will be some, some cost considerations that they'll want to talk about because it's a small rate base. And that's, that's something else we have to always be mindful of. So, I will be happy to talk to Bill and get with Martin and put this all together.
Wouldn't we also need to include environs strategies in that?
Well, we would include environs, but we'd also have to include, and we've, we've already reached out, I haven't gone through all the whole list of water things that we're doing, but we reached out to Metropolitan Water District and they, we've said, we need water in Avalon. Can you find water for us if we wanted to barge it over? And so, they're working with us and City of Long Beach to find, because first of all, you have to find the water. It has to be for sale. It has, you know, you have to transport it here. And then, if it's any kind of structure like a pipe, you'd have to go through Coastal Commission and then the Water Board. And the Water Board is probably going to give you your biggest obstacle to it.
State lands.
It's about the water quality. And so, we've, we've started to have these conversations with, again, the Water Board and people were, because we have to, to get the water from somewhere has to be potable. You do not want to have to process it here. You want to have it be already potable. It's much easier that way. But, you know, there, because we are on an island, there are different water standards that the state is going to put on us. And so, they don't want to, they don't want to generally introduce non-island water into the island water system.
However, if Edison, if Edison had to barge, they could run it through the system and there wouldn't, that wouldn't be a concern on that end, I wouldn't think, because they're going to run it through the system. And you're talking about just bringing it over and trying to distribute it elsewhere. Yeah. Well, I, and pardon me to staff, if these things, if you're, if you're talking about these kinds of things, and I know you're right in the midst of them, it's just, and I know it's hard to keep us up on every little thing you're doing, but I mean, this is kind of like a big deal. And so, when he calls me and I get all excited about it and then, you know, it's just, because again, he's talking larger numbers than we're hearing from 270-gallon totes. And, which is exciting for those of us who want to see water at least dealt with on an emergency basis now. So, I appreciate your efforts and yes, you will give them.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I just would add one more thing. Part of what we like to do and the wise, we sometimes can't come back to immediately, we want to do our homework. Because we don't want you to get excited about something that maybe is not going to pan out for a number of reasons. I'm not saying that this won't, but I'm just saying that we want to make sure that we chase everything down before we come back to it. And so, that's all.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's get back to Ole.
I will once again call the Order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. And we have a roll call.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
Chairman Olson?
Here.
Do we have any announcements?
I'm not aware of any this evening.
Perfect. Any written communications?
None that I'm aware of.
Perfect. Any presentations?
Zero.
Boom. That and a thousand. Oral communication. Does the public have anything to say that's not on our agenda this evening? If you would please step forward. Nobody rush into the podium. Consent calendar, Ben.
Yes, you've got two items on the consent calendar this evening. You have trustee actions from the March 18th meeting as well as the CEOs and CFOs report. Right, those, sorry, those are the two items on the consent calendar.
Does any member want to remove an item from the consent calendar? Any member of the public want to comment an item on the consent calendar?
Got a question for the city attorney. Can only two of them vote on the actions since they were the only two that were present? That was Hernandez and Olson. And the other three need to abstain?
If, if members have not reviewed the live recording of the meeting, then they would not be able to vote on this item. So, then they would abstain from this item. If you have, if you have reviewed the live recording of this meeting and you are able to say, yes, the actions fairly reflect what happened at the meeting, then you can vote on it. If you haven't, you can't.
So, will it be appropriate to ask for abstentions?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody like to? Yes. Anybody like to abstain from acting on the actions?
I have to.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
Interchange motion, Mr. Hernandez?
It doesn't matter, it fails.
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation to the hospital board.
Is that gonna call for the questions?
You're eight of three people, don't they?
Yeah, you don't have a corner for this one, if you have three abstentions. So, one of you is gonna have to watch the-
Yeah, one's gotta watch the tape.
Watch the video.
Go ahead, Cindy. Why appoint Cindy? Unless Joe wants to watch a bunch of videos.
It'll probably be five minutes long.
I would be happy to watch the video.
Then we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
And, and with, with that agreement to watch the next meeting, I would also like to hold over item number two until the next meeting.
The report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask for clarification? Do you want the hospital agenda to come back at the August 5 meeting? We typically only have the hospital agenda typically, only, at the second council meeting of every month.
I would be happy to move forward with this on the first meeting, if that was the pleasure of my team here. But I will say that I do not feel as though I have had adequate time to review the documentation, and I would like a little bit more time to read through the reports, the budget, and just feel more comfortable before moving forward.
So, we're moving one and two over to the August 5 meeting. Okay. General business?
Yes, general business, you have one item this evening, the proposed appointment of three directors to the Avalon Medical Development Corporation Board. We have three physicians, one belonging to Kelly Dahl, Paul De Meyer, and Ross Turner, that expired in June. The CEO has brought forward through his board, three recommendations. I believe there were five submitted in total. I believe John is here. If you'd like him to come forward to discuss this item, I'm sure he would be happy to do so.
Boys and girls, how do we feel about this?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
The hospital, the board has recommended three year appointments. Do you want to concur with their recommendation?
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask a question, Mr. Frill. Just to get you off the podium, and everybody can see your face. Here's our hospital administrator.
Happy to do that, John Frill, the CEO of Catalina Island Medical Center.
I was curious on the one appointment, oh, the third gentleman, no, it wasn't Kathy, I'm sorry. The one didn't respond to being a resident of Avalon. One of them, I'm sorry. It wasn't Kelly.
Registered voter?
Yes.
Rich Haynes?
Yes, the gentleman that's not a registered voter in the city of Avalon.
Right.
I know that's probably, that's probably not a prerequisite in our, in our, in our bylaws at all, or in, in any code that says they need to be residents of-
It's correct, it's not, it's not a requirement. Mr. Haynes has been a resident at Hamilton Cove for 10 years, but I think his voting is over town at his main residence.
Okay, I'm okay. And I'd just like to say in the future, not with, I think of a lot of our boards and whatever, it would be nice to kind of get a, try, try to achieve a wider range of demographics on some of our committees. So, that the entire community is better represented. And I'm not just pointing you out if it feels like that kind of across the board.
Sometimes it's hard to find people who want to volunteer.
Well, I guess, I guess that's when we were talking earlier about fostering and developing people in our community, so they feel comfortable to, to get more involved in our community, is, I think, one of the ways we could need to go.
And if I may, on behalf of our board, I'd like to stress that we are working on it as well. We spent months working on nominations to present to you tonight, and we'll roll that forward, because from time to time, board members either leave, or their term expire. So, we're always looking to develop new board representation. Good point.
You agree, John?
So, we have five, we have five possible candidates for the board, and these are the three top candidates here.
These are the three recommended by the board.
Okay, by the Board of Directors of the Medical Center. You know, I have to respect that. I haven't talked to any of the, the different candidates for this, but if the board recommends them.
To me, it was very similar to the planning commission. I interviewed them and felt comfortable, and y'all pretty much, you know, were in-
I believe it was three to two.
Pretty much. But I think you were very thorough in your process.
I think that they know a little more about their personnel than we would. Yeah, I would say so. How long is their term for?
Three years.
It's a three-year term.
Yes, sir.
And Kelly Dahl is serving a second three-year term, so she's been on the hospital board for three years. The other two candidates would be coming new to the board to serve three-year terms.
Do you feel comfortable with these?
Well, very much so. Our board has vetted these individuals. They've met with them individually. They've talked to them about their interests, their reason for serving, and that's why the recommendation is coming to you tonight.
Okay, because I noticed that they will be able to attend meetings daytime and evening time. I just see that also, I just read that too, that this certain gentleman was a registered voter in another city, so I'm wondering how much he does, has a commitment to Avalon. But, at the same time, I respect the, the Board of Directors and what their choices are. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go along with that, I believe.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, to go ahead and accept the, these three members for the hospital board.
I'll second.
Any further discussion from the public? Call for the question.
All eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to continuing to work with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Sampson, there have been people in the past that have served on that board that lived on the mainland. In good old days, it was just Avalon people, but then they became professional people on board. That's when I got off.
Poor high-tech.
Yeah, really.
Glad to hear it, too.
I have no report. Members? Any reports?
Not for me.
I think we'll adjourn.
Okay. Now, we'll be going into closed session?
No, we're going to go to the housing authority.
Oh, my, oh, that's what you needed to do.
Then we can do a question. That's you.
Oh, my God, this is the first one of these, too.
Sorry.
I thought it was only.
No.
Okay. Like to call the meeting of the housing authority of the city of Avalon to order? Roll call?
Such enthusiasm. Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Chairman Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
There are none this evening.
Good. Are there any, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak to the housing authority? No? Okay. Consent calendar.
Yes, we have one item on the consent calendar this evening. It is actions from the March 18 meeting. And I, unless one of you three watched that meeting on the TV?
No action taken.
No, there's no action?
You know, I was actually, I was just thinking about that. I was here for those meetings.
Oh, you were?
Okay.
So, I probably could have, yeah.
Do the actions reflect what occurred at those meetings?
Thanks, you're safe here.
Nothing, because it was a one minute long. It was one minute long, okay. Yeah, I will not be abstaining.
Okay, wonderful.
Move staff on item one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, discussion? Call for the vote.
All eyes?
No.
So, it's three eyes and two abstentions.
Three eyes and two abstains.
Oh.
Sampson.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. I got excited. Okay. I thought I blinked or something.
I was probably at that meeting, too, but I can't, it's not on my calendar.
No general business?
No, right, no general business, so we just have a closed session.
No.
We have conference with legal counsel. This is initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 54956.9. This is suing the state of California for taking money away.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, in closed session, the housing authority of the city of Avalon unanimously gave direction to staff to contact the league, to indicate that the housing authority of the city of Avalon would be participating in a lawsuit against the Department of Finance to recover funds illegally taken from the housing authority.
Thank you very much.
Reportable action.
Okay, no further action? Meeting's adjourned.